All right. According to my clock, it is 6:31. It is Wednesday, May 1st, and I welcome you to the Northborough School Committee Open Meeting. We are all present and accounted for. First on our agenda this evening is audience sharing. Any members of the audience? All right, moving right along. Unfortunately, Mr. McNary couldn't join us this evening. We will put that on an agenda for later to come. And the next on the item is the reappointment of our Financial Planning Committee Liaison. And we have Mr. Strickland here. Do you want to come up?
Yes.
Stockland. Stockland, yeah. Sorry, Scott.
I don't know if you guys want to.
The problem with that table, as lovely as it is, there's no microphone over there.
Okay.
So sometimes the viewers don't.
That's fine.
Here, so.
Okay.
But we're working on it. We're working on it. We've got plans in the works, so. Do you want to?
Sure. So one of the school committee's responsibilities is to appoint a member to the town's Financial Planning Committee. So Mr. Stockland took on the responsibility last year to complete a three-year term of another member who stepped down. And at this point, the question is whether or not the committee would like to reappoint Mr. Stockland to the Financial Planning Committee. There's no other people who are interested, so.
Long, long crowded.
So, but again, we'll turn it back over to you, Kelly.
All right. Well, thank you very much for joining us. I appreciate it. Last time we saw you, it was in a little box on a screen.
Correct.
Back in October, so thank you for coming in, and we appreciate it so much. Could you just tell us a little bit about last year? Did you guys meet much?
So we really did not meet.
Okay.
Our first meeting was really to engage for this year's town meeting. So we started in March. I will let you know that four of the six members on the committee are new. And, you know, it was, I think, a unique year this year because of the appointment of the new town administrator, Tim, joining in. And I think a lot of the budgetary items were well in process by the time that he got here. So I think because of that, it was a sort of an interesting process to go through this year. I think the, if memory serves me correctly, the Financial Planning Committee, we approved every item with the exception of one. And you guys saw that at the town meeting last week. I think we realize that the town looks to us for guidance, right? I mean, people aren't necessarily going to base their entire decision on what the Financial Planning Committee does, but I do think it has weight with the audience. And I think you guys saw that at the town meeting this year. And I think it's really incumbent upon us to, you know, maybe dig in a little bit more than what we did this year, ask some additional questions. Because I think what happens is the town, you know, they get presented with these articles one after the other, right? And it's very easy to sort of roll from one to the next. And a lot of people at town meeting don't necessarily have the big picture of what's really going on and how everything fits together. So our goal, we've got one more meeting this year, which I think everybody knows at this point is going to be on the fire station. And so we will be meeting a couple of times right before that. My guess is in August or September, before the October meeting. And then we're also going to get together for a special meeting in May to really talk about, you know, roles and responsibilities and how, really what the guardrails are on us in terms of the questions that we should be asking and how much we should be sort of digging into what's presented to us. So I think it'll be a little bit different going forward. But it's been a great experience so far. I think everything has functioned pretty well. And so I certainly would be, you know, very open and happy to, you know, to continue, continue on with the process for the next couple of years, three years.
Thank you.
So.
I will open up to my other committee members if you guys want to go down the line.
Sure. So Scott, first of all, thank you so much for, I know this year has been a little bit in flux due to our town administration sort of changing hands. So thank you for sort of picking up when they resumed to the Financial Planning Committee. I think that one thing our committee has spoken about is having a relationship with the, our liaison or appropriated, not appropriate, appointed.
Sure.
Delegate on financial planning. And this year was a little different. How do you see that sort of relationship and communication moving in the future?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think that's a great question. And I would mention too that I'm pretty well schooled in the importance of schools within the community, my wife being an administrator in Grafton, and she's been there for a number of years. So I would extend the same offer that I did when we talked earlier. And I don't know how often the school committee meets regularly, but if we could set up a schedule, and I certainly would be willing to report out on the things that we're talking about and what we're doing regularly. I mean, that could mean every meeting, it could mean every other meeting, but whatever you feel is most appropriate, I think it makes all the sense in the world. Because it gives you a insight into really the things that we're talking about, the things that we're thinking about. You know, as I indicated, I think the next big thing for us is the fire station, right? That's going to be the focus of the, of the October town meeting. But there were a lot of things that happened this year in a relatively compressed period of time. We had all of our meetings weekly, back-to-back, from March until really the week before town meeting. So admittedly, it's been unique, but I think going forward, that makes all the sense in the world, and I'm certainly happy to do that as you guys deem appropriate.
That'd be great. Yeah, we meet typically the first Wednesday of the month unless a holiday or random event pops up, then it shifts, but typically the first Wednesday of the month from September until June, we'll, we're here. Although next year, maybe we'll be in a different location. But as of now, we're in this location. So, you know, our main, our main timing would probably be in the earlier months, like, I'd say like September, October, November. Those are usually the months that we're really kind of delving into our budget goals, and that's when a lot of the hopes and wishes is discussed. And so those earlier type months would probably be.
And I would say just put me on the calendar, because I think it's important for me to know what is important to you guys as well. Because as one of six members on the committee, you know, we each get to make a case and discuss what we're talking about. So if I know that there are things that are very important to you that may be out of the ordinary from what's happened in the past, you know, I need to know that. So I would say throw me on the calendar and, you know, I will be here as needed.
Thank you.
And I think typically the preliminary budget, October, November, is when Mr. Martino will present that, and then we talk about it pretty much through every meeting until March.
Okay.
When we have our public hearing.
Okay.
March or April. And then one other question, do you, I guess, do you foresee any sort of financial path for the schools? Is there a vision that you have as a member of the Financial Planning Committee in terms of the larger picture of our town?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's interesting, and I remember when Greg came and talked to us, we talked a lot about the student population in town, right? And there are some studies, I think, that say that that's growing. Others will point out over the last 10 years, it's been kind of flat to down. And I would say that, you know, for a town like Northborough, we're primarily residential. And so what attracts people to a town, not only geographic proximity to, you know, highways and things like that, but I think most importantly, it's the schools. And I know when Joanne and I moved here from Maryland, we'd never been to New England before, so we didn't know anything. I was working at Fidelity at the time in Marlboro, and so we were looking at a community that was probably within 10 or 15 miles of Marlboro, but the schools were the number one thing in terms of why we picked the community. So I would say the things that, you know, keep the schools not only in good physical condition, but also good academically are, would be certainly a priority of mine. And I think a lot of people that are in town, I mean, that's why people move here, and that's what keeps our, our community desirable and keeps our property values high, which is in everybody's best interest. So.
Thank you. That was nice.
Just one quick one.
Sure.
Is that also if anything comes up with financial planning, and if there's any issues that you see, always have a line of communication with our chair and also the superintendent, because you never know what emergency can arise or what need arises.
Yep.
So just make sure that you're, you have the contact with the chair and with Greg, and we will respond to anything or any information that you need.
Okay.
And I'd like to thank you for your service on the board. And even though it was very light year, I mean, the longer you serve, the better you know things.
That's true.
And it becomes like a right hand, so it gets easier as time goes by.
Yeah.
But thank you very much for willing to do a three-year term.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'll be, I'll be certainly happy to do that. Like I said, our next, it's not going to be a formal meeting, but I think our next get-together to talk about really roles and responsibilities for the planning committee with four out of the six of us being new is going to be the end of May. And I can certainly report out to you if there's anything unique or interesting that comes out of that. But I think it's more around us really getting our legs under us and learning a little bit about not only the process, because it was fast and furious this year. I mean, the very first meeting, Greg, I don't know if you were the first one or the second one, but it was literally, you know, you had people coming before you and just throwing it all out there. And we're just, some of us, like I said, two, had been on the planning committee before, but the four of us were new, and it's like, well, okay, you know, sounds good, sounds good, sounds good. And I think that's the way things roll this year for the most part.
Well, you'll be the senior ones now, so.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
I'm wondering, when you had your meeting for this, all the meetings actually, before town meeting, were you just sort of looking at the warrants, having discussion, and then sort of moving on? Or were there other questions posed to you by, say, other groups in town or other boards? And where did you, or did you get any support from anyone, like maybe, you know, the town department that gave you information that you needed?
Well, so, so the leaders of each department came, and they really talked about what was important for them. And it was really going through the warrants, kind of one at a time, taking a look at them, asking questions. I don't recall that we got a lot of input from others. There was a member of the Appropriations Committee that attended one or two of the meetings, but for the most part, we were the only ones that were in the room. And it was us just really kind of talking about what we thought. We were asking some, I think, intelligent questions along the way. And then we would vote on it and see kind of where we, where we stood. And like I said, we, we approved everything with the exception of, and they weren't all unanimous, many, some of them were just by majority, but we literally approved everything except for the steeple at the church on Church Street. So it was interesting, and I do think that we could benefit from having a more holistic view of everything. And that's where I hope we get to by this time next year, is maybe a slightly different process, recognizing, I think, that, you know, as we said, it was kind of compressed this year, and it was newer. But I think there's an opportunity for us to really step back and take a look at everything because that impacts everybody in the town as well, right? How you, how you look at things. But for this year, it was very much like one department after the next, and they came in and said, we need this, we need this, we need this. And we would look at each one of the items, take a look at it, ask some questions, and just kind of see what everybody thought.
Well, it's really important work, and as a parent, taxpayer, and school committee member, I appreciate you sort of representing that lens on that board as well. Thank you, as everyone said, for taking that on again.
Yeah, I mean, it is. It's, like I said, it's, and it really becomes apparent at town meeting, right, that people do pay attention. Because I, you know, one of the things that's always been very interesting to me is that we're a town of 14,000 people, but usually 200 show up to vote. This year was a little bit of an exception, because I know that there were some very, you know, critical topics to some people, and we topped out at around 360. That's a really small number. And not everybody that's there is an expert on anything, and so they look to the committees, like Financial Planning, like the Select Board, like the Appropriations Committee. And I think it helps give them confidence that somebody has looked at these things in more detail and asked questions of the people that are asking for the money, you know, before they cast their vote.
I agree.
So.
Yeah, all good. I think, yeah, it'd be great to just, I think, if it was quarterly, I think that would be more than reasonable to just pull in for updates.
I would just like to acknowledge that I fully support Scott's reappointment. I think I would echo his remarks in that it's been, you know, a change of leadership and therefore kind of re-norming about cadence of meetings. And I think moving forward, that, that will kind of get back to a normal sense of frequency of meetings. And then I would just echo the comments that, you know, we understand that we're the largest department in the town, we are the largest percent of the budget, we have the largest impact on the overall budget, and we take that seriously. And we have some projects that we're exploring moving forward and having a good sense of the, not just the next year financial picture, but, you know, three years out, five years out. And we are too concerned about hitting that, the tax levy and losing that, and then having to get to a point where in order to pass budgets, you know, we have to ask for overrides, which is not always a good place. So whatever we can do to, you know, partner and really understand a longer-term plan and be part of that is really beneficial to, I think, the school committee and the district.
Yeah. And I think you have good partners on the planning committee too. I mean, not just myself, but I think everybody that's on there, I think, recognizes the importance of schools to the community, right? You are the biggest item in the budget, but I think you're also the biggest impact on, you know, the value of the community, notwithstanding that we're the safest community in. That helps. But, you know, people move here for the schools.
Great. Joan?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I move the Northborough Kid Aid School Committee vote to reappoint Scott Stockland as the school committee's representative to the Financial Planning Committee for a three-year term to expire on April 30th, 2027.
Motion by Joan, seconded by Lauren. Any discussion? We can just do a hand vote tonight?
Yeah.
All in favor? Unanimously appointed.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Scott.
We appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, appreciate the confidence and letting me roll.
Thank you.
Feel free to run.
I'll walk. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we'll see you soon.
Yes.
So we'll be in touch. Who should I send an email to? Kelly, is that you?
Yeah, you could send it to me. You can always just send it to the NSC at, and then the long, like, school address thing.
Okay.
And then that'll go to like the chair, but the Northborough School Committee.
Perfect.
So I am the chair tonight. I don't know if I'll be the chair next month because we have an election.
Okay.
And so Lauren and I are up for reelection, so that might change. And then we also reappoint the members.
Their board.
Yeah, the board title. So that's your safest bet, is the NSC for now, but then after that, whoever responds to you.
One way or another, I'll get in touch.
I plan on being in the superintendent next month.
And Greg will still be at that.
You just saw his email.
His email is always the same.
Okay, sounds good. And, yeah, so, and let's plan on getting me on the calendar starting in September.
Awesome.
Have a great.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice season.
Have a good night.
You too. Bye.
All right, moving right along. Principal reports by Ms. Jennifer Callahan. Come on down.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Jen.
Thank you for having me. We will start our reports. Are you ready for this, Joy? There's four pages.
Ready. Read fast.
We're going to start with Melikan. We have a busy May. Our baseball, softball, and track teams' seasons are underway, and our musicians are participating in the Micah Solo and Ensemble Festival. Today, our eighth graders were visited by second-generation Holocaust speaker Dan Ottenheimer as a meaningful connection to our genocide work. Our eighth graders have also begun their high-quality, engaging, interactive civics projects. On August 14th, as part of their civic study, eighth graders will visit the town election, and on May 29th, they will take a trip to Boston. Our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders will take their math MCAS next week, and then our eighth graders will take science, technology, engineering, and civics MCAS over the next few weeks. Tomorrow, our seventh graders will be treated to an annual favorite, the Chariots of the Sun, interactive presentation of Greek mythology, which connects with their ELA and social studies work. On May 10th, our seventh graders will visit Patriots Place for a STEM field trip. At the end of May, fifth grade students will visit Melikan for their student-led tours and meeting with our counselors. On May 24th, all three grades will engage in BMX anti-bullying presentations. Additionally, our sixth graders will take a trip to Boundless Adventures. This is the annual end-of-the-year shared experience, and our seventh and eighth graders will work with visiting Latin dancers. Now for Z-School. We held our annual PTO Kid Fest this past Friday. We had a wonderful evening as a community with games, food, and auctions. The turnout was great, the weather was perfect, and we raised around $9,000 that will help support field trips and enrichment activities. Tomorrow, we will be holding a storytime in parent orientation for our incoming kindergarten families. We have 38 new zebras that will be coming to start, and they will be getting acclimated with our school and staff, and we are excited to have them. Next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we will be celebrating our amazing teachers with some fun treats. Third through fifth grade students will be taking math MCAS over the next two weeks, and then our fifth graders will be taking the science and technology MCAS after that. The students have been working so hard to show everything that they have learned, and we are looking forward to seeing how they do. Now for Beasley. We're looking forward to our next Walk to School Day, which is on May 8th, that's next Wednesday. Thank you to our staff volunteers and Mrs. Perkins for helping to coordinate the walk. We appreciate our friends at the Northborough Police Department for allowing us to use their parking lot as the starting point and help us crossing students safely. We are planning end-of-the-year activities and field trips. Our field trips require a great deal of planning and coordinating among teachers, parents, admins, and PTO, as well as our district nursing staff. Everyone is very excited about the upcoming field trips. The dis classroom is happening for Grade Five. Sturridge Village will be our Grade Three students. Grade Two will be going to the Mass Audubon. Grade One will be visiting Southwick Zoo, and the kindergarteners are going to go visit Davis Farmland. And then in June, Grade Four will visit Mr., the Mount Pequo Museum. Students from LSSZ, Beasley, and Proctor will perform at the All-Town Band. This is a time-honored tradition. The band has been working hard for this event. Beasley is scheduled to perform at 7:00 PM on May 15th at Algonquin. On May 22nd, our students will participate in the annual Titan Games at ARHS. Our teachers and students are so excited. Thank you to the entire Beasley committee and, not committee, but community for our, your support. Additionally, our fifth graders will visit Melikan to meet staff and explore the middle school through guided tours. On May 30th, Beasley families are invited to the Spring Band and Chorus Concert and Fifth Grade Art Show. We are excited to hear how much progress our musicians have made this year. The Fifth Grade Art Show is at 6:00 PM, and the band concert begins at 7:00. Now for our Proctor Penguins. April has been an exciting month for Proctor School. We kicked off the month by learning all about the solar eclipse and even crafting eclipse viewers with cereal and shoeboxes alongside their buddy classes. Our PTO pulled off a spring fair earlier last month that was a big hit. Thanks to their hard work and dedication, the fair was well-attended and a success. Big shout-out to our PTO, as well as our Proctor staff, for offering exciting experience to be raffled off. In other news, Megan Coffin, one of our Lower Wing Castle aides, organized a Castle Art Class for our Lower Wing students. Megan worked with our staff to create exciting opportunities for our students to be creative while incorporating occupational therapy skills throughout the experience. We are introducing the concept of restorative practice at Proctor. A couple of our teachers have already dipped their toes into this restorative circle with their classes, creating a warm and inclusive environment that promotes a safe and inclusive community for all. It's also building bridges and making connections for the students. Lastly, our fifth graders have been getting prepped for their middle school transition with our spring safety chats. Detective Sullivan and Stacy Mahoney have been teaming up to give our rising sixth graders the lowdown on how staying safe and making smart decisions. Today's discussion centered on the concept of group thinking, emphasizing to students the nuance of understanding that while conformity can be advantageous in certain contexts, there are occasions where independent thought and actions are paramount. Now on to Lincoln. The solar eclipse seemed so far away, but it was a complete success. We had parents that engaged in the, observing the eclipse, and we handed out glasses to them, so they got to step out of their car as they waited for the parent pickup line, so that was really special. We also had in April, right before April break, we had our first-ever student versus staff scooter hockey game. It was a culminating celebration of all of the academic highlights and accomplishments the students have achieved so far this year, like their dibble scores, like MCAS, the ST Math. We kids got certificates for achieving more than 4,000 puzzles. So we really had it, a really grand presentation. We had our student council of students run that and organize it. And to kick off the game, the match, we had Gigi and Pat the Polar Bear face off to start the game. We had two students sing the National Anthem, and the teachers did claim victory, 2 to 0. This past week at LSS, we had several enrichment programs for kindergarten, Grade Three, and Grade Four. Students engage in activities about liquids and solids, erosion, and magnetic force. We continue to send our polar bears off on field trips. This is very exciting at Lincoln Street. Grade One is visiting Tower Hill on May 10th. Grade Three will be visiting the Concord Museum on May 24th. Grade Two is attempting, is attending a production at the Hanover Theater on May 28. And Grade Five will visit the U.S. Constitution in Charlestown on May 31st. And I think we may have mentioned this before, but we are also doing an all-town Grade Five field trip over at McAfee Park on June 10th, and that's going to bring all fifth graders together in activities, some get-to-know-you games, we're going to have lunch. So we're really excited about bringing that and really hosting it right in town. So it's going to, that's going to be a wonderful experience. On May 9th, the Fifth Grade Community Service Project, organized by the Fifth Grade students, is, they are having a dinner and a show for the seniors in the town and also any grandparents of any of our fifth graders. So we're hosting that at Lincoln Street School. The cafeteria director here at Melikan, Brian Lawrence, he is happy to graciously help us with putting on the food, and the kids are going to be servers, and some of them are going to be doing a magic show in singing and dancing. So that's, it's a first ever. I hope we can make it a tradition because the kids are really excited about that. And then coming up on the Music and the Arts Calendar, we also have the All-Town Band coming up on May 15th that our fifth graders will be performing in. We have our concert on May 21st, our Band and Chorus Concert. And then on May 29th, we have our Grade Four Drama Classes. They're going to be performing a production during the day and at night of the story "Thwacked" is the name of it. And again, like the other principals mentioned, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, and we just want to thank all of our teachers for their hard work and dedication. We know we've got six or so weeks to go, and we're really hitting, hitting the ground running every day. So we thank all of our teachers. Teacher Appreciation Week, the PTO has things at all schools are being arranged and organized for, for all the teachers. And then Happy Principals Day today to all of my colleagues. And I really just wanted to thank all of my colleagues. As a new principal, I really enjoyed the adventure, and I couldn't do it without their support. So that's it.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate you getting everybody's reports and reporting to us and everything. It's so busy. I love hearing the fun things at each of the schools, and they're all so different and unique, but they're all fun and engaging and things. I wish every school could do all of that fun stuff, like everybody do the same thing, you know? But we'll get there in time, I guess. Does anybody have any questions? Joan?
Congratulations on the soon-to-be completion of your first year.
See, the last six weeks is the hardest.
Yeah. I'm worried. I'm worried about the five months.
No, no, no. You have a vision. You know what's coming. It's coming really quick. And I'd just like to say that I think you mentioning how the fifth grade classes are going to be going to the McAfee Park to do that, that just shows the collegiality and working-together cooperation from top down, because you, all the five principals have worked together to get that done. And I think it's such a And I think it's such a wonderful thing for kids to form the new friendships, going from Fifth Grade to Middle School, as much as it goes from Middle School in Trotty or Melikan, go up to Algonquin. So it's a new beginning for kids, they can start fresh, and it's, and your enthusiasm is wonderful. I mean, it's wonderful, so thank you very much for your leadership also, and please give our thanks to all the other principals.
I will, thank you so much, Joan.
I don't know if you have any answers to this, Jen. I know that Melikan was having some issues getting coaching for all of the sports this year. Saw a couple posts. Do you know, it sounds like they found a softball coach.
I think every sport, I think, has a coach.
Okay, I guess I was just trying to think about, you know, how we can solve that issue earlier in the school year next year, and maybe whether it's a timeline thing, or whether the town can send out some communication.
So I can speak to that. So we do, so Mike Masarino, who is our Athletic Director at Algonquin Regional High School, will be taking on athletics at both of our middle schools, in Southborough.
Oh, it's amazing.
So there'll be continuity of, you know, getting coaching, scheduling, and we'll have some expertise in that area. Jen did a wonderful job.
You, I know.
And she had took on that responsibility. But obviously, she has a new job, and so that is something we are looking forward to.
I love that, thank you.
That's great.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is Social Emotional Learning Presentation by Dr. Jennifer Lipton O'Connor. Come on down. Oh, and Mary Ellen too, my bestie over there. Mary Ellen loves me. Oh, and is the mic close enough to them?
Thank you all, I'm Jennifer Lipton, Social Emotional Learning Coordinator. Mary Ellen Duggan is gonna be my co-presenter. So we are, maybe we should have the opportunity to share some of our social emotional learning wellness updates. I would like to start with that bigger picture, like what are we trying to accomplish here? And we always go back to one of our strategic objectives, helping balance learners. One of our district priorities, right, is the social emotional and physical learning for students. So that's sort of, you know, the goal of all of this work. And then that visual on the right, I believe that Dr. Reinhardt might have showed that in prior presentations. But this is our, it's a DESI visual, but it shows what we call a multi-tiered system of support. So some of us who are educators are familiar with this model. But it's really something that we're always trying to think about. How do we provide that Tier One, that foundational support for all students? And then for students who might need other targeted or more intensive interventions, how do we also address their needs? So what we're gonna talk about today, we're, there are different programs that might hit each of these tiers a little bit differently. So that's sort of one of our guiding principles here, is that we wanna make sure that we have that universal support for all students, but that we know that some students need additional support as well. So some of our highlights from this school year, we're really excited about the implementation of the Second Step. That's our Tier One curriculum, so that is a social skills curriculum. I'm gonna, the next slide will go into a little more information about that. But all four of our elementary schools have been implementing that this year, and we're really in a great place. I was just at one of the schools reviewing where all the teachers were with the lessons, and we were really on track in many of the schools to get through all of the curriculum this first year, which was not even our goal. We didn't even expect to do that. But I think teachers have realized that this curriculum, Second Step, is really easy for them to use, it's pretty meaningful, it's kind of fun for students. And I think we've really tried to balance the implementation of Second Step with the implementation of Win-Whistled with our educators, knowing that, you know, there's a lot on their plates this year in the elementary schools. So I think, you know, so far, most teachers and students, I think, have said it's been a good success, and we're excited for next year. It'll just be a real smooth start to the school year. In Northborough also this year, we're really excited that each of our four elementary schools have building-based SEL leaders. So I'd love to share who they are, it'll just take a second. At Peaslee School, we have Ms. Buchanan, that's her new name, Ms. Slattery. At the Z-School, we have Ms. Dennington. At Proctor, we have Ms. Demers and Ms. Miller. What am I missing? At Lincoln Street, and at Lincoln Street, we have Mr. Chambers and Ms. Foley. So we have a really nice mix of some special educators, psychologists, behavior specialists, classroom teachers. It's kind of a nice mix of educators. And sometimes we also meet with our Southborough colleagues, so we can kind of talk about all of this work as a team. We just finished collecting the SEL Universal Screen Data, so this is our third year now doing that. I think teachers, it's been a pretty smooth process now that we've done it a few times. And related to that, we've been using the Analytic View Data Dashboard. And I know we've used that a lot of the year. And the SEL data is literally like just been uploaded into the dashboards over the last few days. And we're starting to meet with school teams and to really look at that data and make some, you know, decisions about how we place students even, like based on some of the trends in grades and how we're grouping kids. And so, you know, just to remind you that, again, that's that broad screener that gives us some trends, really, you know? What does Second Grade kind of look like generally? What are some areas of need, what are some areas of strength? So we're really starting to analyze that data in systematic ways, and the dashboards are a really helpful tool. And one of the ways we're looking at that data is in some of our PLCs that are through a collaboration with Student Support Services. So we have monthly meetings, and a lot of those meetings are really focused on looking at different sources of data, and how are we deciding what students need, what level of support, and really trying to work across the different schools to really create more systems and making sure we're doing things in meaningful ways for our students. We've also spent a lot of time this year digesting the new comprehensive health and PE guidelines from the Department of Education. They were just passed this fall. The last time they had guidelines passed was nineteen ninety-nine. So I've been really excited about them because they focus not just on the physical education, but it's very much like SEL, wellness, nutrition, physical health. It's really looking at like the big picture for students. So we've really spent a lot of time, and Mary Ellen has really led a lot of that work along with Andy McGowan at the high school and with Stephanie, and to really look at the ways that we're already addressing some of these, and then maybe how we continue to develop those skills with our students.
And we did just write a grant for that, a DESI grant, to try and help us with that process. So we're not sure if we'll get it or not. We tried.
We are hoping. We had our first wellness days this year. I think those, we know that there's a little more structure for those moving forward. We did have one collaboration that we did wanna at least mention as kind of like a tease for more things to come, is one of our regional groups, that's a substance misuse prevention coalition of many towns called Mass Health Three, has realized that social emotional learning and wellness and that proactive work is actually a really important way to prevent later substance use problems. So they've been starting to fund some pilot programs for schools to do some SEL work in schools. And one of the ways that we worked with them, we were one of two towns that was given some grant money, and teachers in grades, this is really focusing on Grade Six and up, even though we're saying you gotta, you actually have to start younger, but for Grade Six and up, teachers had an opportunity to apply for mini-grants to connect their content area with wellness. We ended up having almost all of them be at the high school. We didn't actually have any here at Melikan, and we only had one at Trotty. It really ended up being mostly at the high school, which I think was more about how we advertised it to teachers too. But I think that's exciting, because for a couple years now, I was asking the coalition to pay for some things like Second Step, and they weren't seeing that direct connection that I was seeing about SEL work and substance use prevention. And I think they're finally getting to that. Not that they're gonna be paying for Second Step next year, and we're hoping to do it sometime, but I think they're finally realizing that they have all this opioid abatement money, and that maybe there's some links. So we're, Mary Ellen and I have been working with those agencies. And I think, you know, given some of the work here in Northborough, it's really exciting with the drug-free school community, the new joining of the Health and Human Services. I think we're in a good place here in Northborough, some great work to come. Mary Ellen's gonna present a few slides with some of the key indicators on the Metro West Health Foundation Survey that we got, which I think is a lot of really positive things from our last administration, so we'll go through that in a second. And one of the last thing I want, things I wanted to highlight from this year is we've continued to use the Say Something Anonymous reporting tip line. We use it at the Melikan and then Trotty or in the high school. And here at Melikan, we've really had a lot of students use the tip line in really helpful and appropriate ways, where we think, you know, students have really accessed help. We've had students submit tips asking for help about themselves. We've had students submit tips about peers. We've had tips we think are from adults, right? So it's a variety of people are using this tip line in ways that's helpful. And I really wanna always highlight Officer Sullivan, our new resource officer, is just been a really great partner. He's, just seeing him in the schools is really a positive thing. He was really developing some positive relationships. Okay, so I just wanted to remind you for the Second Step curriculum, just to kind of remind you of the units. So this is what the K to five looks like. The middle school is a little bit different, but the scope and sequence for K to five include these five units. So Units One through Four go in order, and the bullying, some schools in some grades are doing, did the bullying first, some did it later for a variety of reasons. But like I said, this year, some schools are getting through all five units, all lessons within that, which is really exciting. And then sort of next year, they know, even if they weren't able to do that with the pacing, we know next year, that's our expectation, that everybody will get through all of these. And what's great is when, now that kids are starting to go through it, right? It really builds on itself. So when kids eventually come up here to Melikan, all four schools will have that same foundation of basic expectations. We have the same language, so that when all the kids come up here in Sixth Grade, I think it'll be a lot easier for that transition for the four schools coming together. And even within the elementary schools, then teachers and students know the expectations across different classrooms, different teachers, different places in the building.
Is Second Step an annual cost, or is it?
It is, because it's a digital, it's a web-based, so it is, there is a per-school yearly cost. And thank you for funding that cost. So I wanted to highlight a couple of things at the middle school in particular. So I know that Julie Marancy was here a couple of months ago, I think two months ago, and she gave a really nice overview of the self-program that's now expanded this year into Sixth, Seventh, and Eighth Grade. And she does use some of the Second Step lessons within that. I think we're finding these are middle school lessons. There are some real helpful pieces of Second Step, but there are some pieces that teachers feel like them delivering the lesson is actually more effective than the video. So we're trying to kind of learn that, you know, middle school, and you have middle schoolers, you know, it's, you gotta tread lightly sometimes with these things. So I think they're finding there's the Second Step lessons for middle school. We're not using it in the same exact structured way yet, we're still really exploring that. And I think, you know, the self-class is still really in its infancy, and that really is related to that review of those new guidelines. And what's really nice here at Melikan is that in the course of a student's week, they have two PE classes, one self-class, and one health class. So if you think of kind of their overall picture, you know, that's like four kind of wellness classes a week for our students. And I think, you know, that's a really nice model, especially with these new guidelines. So I think that's a real focus of next year. Again, this is the second year that we've done this rebooted Signs of Suicide program with the like screener that follows up. So we've been doing this with our seventh graders. This year, ninety percent of students participated. The ten percent that didn't participate were either parent opt-out, absent on that particular day, and it was kind of, we made the decision, like it was a one-time thing, if you were absent, we'll kind of give you the information in more natural ways. Or maybe it was a student who, because of maybe some special needs of their own, or maybe personal experiences, we felt like they shouldn't participate in the full program, and we maybe did something more individualized. And usually those students, we had conversations with families and teens in advance, because we know it is a pretty sensitive topic for a lot of students. So the Signs of Suicide program tells you to expect about ten to twenty percent of students to need some kind of follow-up after the training and the screening. And we fell right within that, we were at eight, about eighteen percent of students had some type of follow-up. And that follow-up really ranges from just like a quick conversation to, you know, maybe something more involved, where we really need to get the family involved. You know, sometimes we even end up like sending kids home after that day, if it becomes, you know, something that is upsetting, or they need additional support. So there's really a range. And, you know, it's really nice, because it's just another tool for us to then identify students who might need some additional support that either we can provide within our school day, or we can refer them to outside of school.
And sometimes it's the kids that ask to see somebody.
Right.
It's not because of the answers they gave, it's just that they request.
One of the questions is, would you like to see a counselor today, yes or no? So obviously, anybody who says yes sees it, so that's what a lot of that eighteen percent is. We also have kids who accidentally say yes, and then we pull them in, and they say, I didn't mean to. Kids who say yes to see if we're really telling the truth, and we're really checking the answers, which we are. So, you know, that's where that eighteen percent is a pretty broad. But I do wanna really thank all of the counselors and the staff at Melikan, because it's really a very, it's kind of like an all-hands-on-deck kind of thing. Seventh graders are pretty, you know, they, there can be a lot of follow-up needed, right? A lot of conversations. So I just wanna thank all the folks there. And Mary Ellen was one of the people supporting the Melikan implementation. It was definitely, you know, it's, I think it's a really important program, but it does take a lot of, you know, work on our staff's part. So thank you to all the counselors especially for supporting the students around that.
Does the data come in instantaneously?
Yes.
Okay, I was gonna say, like, if you get, like, a week later, it's like, so it says, yes, I need to tell you the counselor.
That was my job, that was my job, sure, I was the data watcher. And I was like, this person, this person.
So we have it on a Google Form. So students are, students know their name is attached to their answers. It's a Google Form, they have to be logged in. And we, when you see Google, you put the Google into a spreadsheet, and you see them literally.
Yeah.
And we have some additional formatting and a decision tree about which answers will get a kid pulled in. And usually, I'm the one who's doing that, but because I have a seventh grader, I took myself out of it, so Mary Ellen took over the Melikan one. So, yeah, we sort of have somebody who's in charge, and then we have our counselors on the ground, and we're sort of like, you need to see this student. And because we wanna do this instantly, like you said, Kelly, we actually have to look at the schedule. And Melikan actually had to change their schedule in two days because they had a self-class that ended the day, and you want them all to be before lunch, so you have that time if there's follow-up or a family needs to be contacted. So that's part of that planning. It's a pretty intensive planning. You also wanna plan for kids who might not be native English speakers, if they need it translated. So there's a lot of logistical planning that goes behind it. But I think it's a really successful program. And I do wanna say, we've had a lot of, we've had several tips that we believe are directly related to this SOS program, because kids, the tips, the language in the tip was exactly what was said in the training. So it really did seem like kids are taking what they learned and then, you know, following up and trying to get help from their friends. So the main takeaway message from the Signs of Suicide is, you know, if you see a sign that you're concerned about, seek out an adult. You know, so it's really given in that age-appropriate way for seventh graders. Like, we want, there's help out there, you can get better, and ask for help from trusted adults. We also were, are going to be doing, before the end of the year, the Substance Use Screening and Brief Intervention called ESPER, which stands for Screening, Brief Intervention, and Referral to Treatment. It's a state-mandated program. That will be done with all of the eighth graders before the end of this year. One of the things we have to do, kind of like vision and hearing screening. I always like to give a shout-out to our Integrated Sports Program. I think that's part of our social emotional learning work, right? It's such a great program to see, I encourage you to go to any games you're able to see. And one of the things that will be coming soon, that you might hear this from- And one of the things that will be coming soon, that you might hear this from your student, the SEL screener we've been doing, that the teachers have been doing about the students, our Melican teachers have really wanted to know what this, how the students feel about themselves and how the students rate themselves. So we decided to kind of try out a pilot and optional where students can rate themselves on, it's really the identical screener that the, the staff are rating them on. So we're, we're going to be sharing out information for families so they can have some information about whether they want their student to participate. And the idea would be just to get another data point on what students are thinking about themselves, kind of like what Mary Ellen said, when students say, when we asked, do you want to see a counselor today? Because I think we're, you know, we're always trying to look at, are there other ways to catch kids that might be kind of slipping through, especially with social emotional issues, because sometimes those can really be hidden. So I think this is really coming from the teachers wanting to see if this information could be helpful and if maybe we can also identify other groups of students who we can support different ways. So we'll see, we'll see what comes of that. And again, we're thinking about whether some of those dashboards can help us look at this data as well. Okay, so now I'm going to hand it over to Mary Ellen.
Not some data. So I first need to apologize because the numbers you had in your packet that you got earlier this week or whenever you got it are a little bit different than what I'm showing here. And it was my error because the first page of the key indicators that we get is just seventh and eighth grade and that's where I pulled the numbers you have from. This is the numbers from 2021 from the sixth to eighth grade that, that we're showing here. So there is a little bit of difference. So the Metro West Health Survey is given in the fall and it's given to all students six through twelve that choose to participate. So for our key indicators, which is just a overview, a broad overview of what some of the results are, usually come in March. They came a few weeks ago. And for sixth to eighth grade, they combine both middle schools. So when we get our three hundred page report, probably soon in the next few weeks, I would think, usually it's mid to late May, we get the full report. It will divide out the two middle schools. So we'll have more data on what's actually happening in each school. So as you can see here, this was the substance use key indicators that we got. And we could see an increase, a slight increase in the lifetime cigarette smoking. If we're talking about positive behavior norms, which we would, which is how we want to go about things, we would say that ninety-eight percent of our students have never had a cigarette, right? So a lot of these, look at, when you, the Metro West Health data, it's either looking at lifetime or the past thirty days of how the questions are worded. So when we're, when we look at these key indicators, it's a way for us as a team to think, where do we need to focus our efforts when we're talking about prevention? And that's where all of our community people come in, our drug free community and our Encompass Coalition, our Health and Human Services people in both towns. So we have a great resource, our school resource officer, when we have to think about what are we going to do for prevention, when we want to, what's our target areas? So all the rest had decreased, which was a little bit surprising. We all anticipated to see it arise because when we did the survey in 2021, it was right when we came back to school, right? When we started back in from being at home. And a lot of the decreases we saw in substance use, we thought was access because kids were at home. They were, everybody was quarantined at home. But from what we see is that it's all decreased, even from those numbers, which is great. And then the next questions that they asked, the next topic is violence. And you can see here, they're asked about physical fighting in a lifetime, physical fighting on school property, if they carried a weapon in a lifetime, if they carried a weapon on school property in a lifetime. So there is some increase in physical fighting on school property. I'm not sure this increase matches up with what we have for our disciplines. So we would have to look at that. That's something we'll have to look at, at the middle schools, if the numbers match up to what our disciplines are. And then we have the bullying victimization, which is where we saw a rise, which is definitely gonna have, gonna have to be a focus of ours. There was an increase in bullying in the past twelve months and bullying on school property from 2021. There was a decrease in cyberbullying, which I think we focused on cyberbullying for a while and now we need to think about all the rest. Second step, all of those lessons, they have the bullying section in there and that goes K through eight. So hopefully we're getting that, but that's something that's gonna be definitely an area that we're going to need to focus on. And then mental health, these all went down too, which is a great sign. This is, these all rose in 2021 and we did focus on the mental health and wellness.
Some of them went down pretty significantly.
Yeah, so if you look at them, I don't think we were expecting these numbers to go down as drastically as they did. But when we look at this, our focus is gonna gate, be, once again, be the girls. When you look at the girl data and the, and the female and the male data, because for the girls, sometimes it's almost twice as much, if not more. So, and that's how it was in 2021 also. So, or even though all the numbers are down, there's still areas of focus that we'll have for this. And then physical activity and body weight. People said they exercised for greater than twenty minutes or three or more days a week. We know that sixty minutes of exercise a day is what we, we would like to see for the ultimate health and wellness of everybody. But so people that said they exercised for greater than sixty minutes in a week, basically, went down. So that's something we don't want to see go down, right? We'd like to see that go up. And then people who themselves said they were, felt they were overweight or obese went up, but this number does not correlate with the numbers we pull from our health office records. So people are, have a different body image of what their numbers actually say. So that'll be another area to, for us to focus on. So like I said, we have to remember, these are just the key indicators, which is a broad overview, that they are combined data from Trotter and Melican. The detailed data will be coming soon and we will probably do a full presentation of data in the fall. We are planning, how we're going to do that? We just started with a drug, I'm trying to think what they're calling it. A student advisory council or coalition as part of the Encompass Coalition, which is our substance use coalition at the high school. And I think we'd like to have the student voice in this data to see what they pull out from the data. So we have different ways that some students are going to look at the data. So it's, there is a roadmap as to what our plans are, but it's all a roadmap.
Okay, so I just wanted to highlight some of the professional development we've done this year that's focused on being balanced learners. We actually had a really great professional development day in March. Some of the things we focused on are the second step implementation. In August, all teachers went through the second step implementation in a variety of ways. We made sure that our ESPs also were trained. And the way that second step works is one of the nice features is that it's something that can be done one on one with a student. Sometimes students need that previewing and then they do a one on one with an aide and then they might then participate with the full class. So there's a, and there's a lot of extension activities that are available. So it's really flexible. So we, I'm really excited that our ESPs were able to get training on second step as well. Again, as I mentioned, we continue to every month work on how we're using data to make decisions about student interventions and really making sure that we're always talking about evidence based practices. Some of our professional development looked at trauma informed and inclusive practices. Again, we had some where we really were trying to connect UDL, SCL equity and inclusion for our learners. We again, this year in March, had another session of the mental health first aid training. This time it was provided by the Samaritans of Merrimack Valley for free. They, every time we've asked for these trainings, we've been able to get them for free. So that's been appreciated by our staff. We had a school avoidance set of presentations by the Family Success Partnership. And I think people got a lot out of those and were actually requesting like an advanced course for next year on that. We had two sessions of, from a state of stress to readiness, using Brain Gym to unlock the door to learning. And that was really focused more on like the young, that was more elementary teachers, really focusing on some like techniques that students can use to really calm their body and get them ready for learning. Again, we are members of the Mass Partnership for Youth and I was going to ask you to know to resend some links because they provide, they have some on demand parent trainings on a variety of topics, including some of the things Mary Ellen just highlighted, like cyberbullying, online safety, parenting, like the importance of safe and exercise. So we can show that again, both free and on demand. And then a lot of the PD this year, of course, has been focused on the new IEP training and how all the variety of stakeholders will need to interface with the new IEP and really thinking about our inclusion practices. So we've had a lot of PD this year as well. And I think teachers always want more social emotional learning strategies and, and ways to support students. So we're always looking for new PD opportunities. So for next year, you know, some of our priorities are really, you know, continuing that second step implementation, really, you know, getting teachers more comfortable with the language, really, including all of the specials teachers, all of the bus drivers, lunch folks, right? Custodians. And I think then really sharing more information with families now that we're more comfortable with the program, really getting that out there in the community because there's a whole parent component that we've really barely touched yet. Again, that health and the comprehensive health and PE standards are a big one that a lot of folks across the three districts will be working on. Hopefully we'll be getting that grant, which will pay for a lot of professional development. And then again, our, our data driven MTSS model has been a big focus and will continue to be for next year. And then again, some of those community partnerships, excited about the new services and how that's going to look and how we can partner with them. And then again, all of our substance use prevention work across the school and the town is really going to benefit all of us. So unless Mary Ellen has anything else, thank you to our teachers who are really the ones doing all this hard work. And of course, you know, our principals and all of our school leaders for all of us, I think, by all the times of our state of social emotional health.
Thank you so much. Quick question about the, the data. Well, you know, you said you're getting it and separating. Will that, you said you're going to present it in the fall, but would you send the results somehow to families?
I think we'll talk about that at our.
Trying to decide on what to do with it.
On the website somewhere is what we did last year when we did the presentation. So it would be that, once we get it and look at it and kind of digest it a little bit and see where our focus areas need to be.
Great. Because you don't get unique student data, it's just.
No, it's all anonymous.
There's some you have to be careful with because when they do disaggregate, there are some subgroups that are small enough that you have to be careful. And I almost said earlier, that's why they are still only having two genders, they're not using like other non-binary because they're asking students that, but they're not disaggregating the data because it's too small of a sample size. So like, for example, we have students who are over grade twelve, like are CAP students. So we, we put those together with the twelfth graders so, because they're such a small sample size. So some of it too is you do want to be careful about some of that when you get that whole stack, be really careful that way to share.
I do have a few questions. I think last year I mentioned that, you know, this type of presentation is probably one of the more important presentations we hear all year. So thank you so much for all your work in SEL. My first is with the Say Something tip line, what's the turnaround time? Is someone alerted in case there is a significant problem that needs immediate attention?
Yes, so the tip line is, we are only using it at Melican. So there's three ways somebody can submit a tip. Their phone, which is very rare, a web based browser or the app. Most tips come through the app. So once a tip is submitted, it goes to like a clearinghouse, like a twenty-four hour center that's in Florida. And so literally instantly, as long as the electrons take, right, to get there, it like goes, they screen it. So it's a twenty-four hour, like, you know, call center. And then they have this immediate determination if it's life safety or not. So the ones that are considered life safety, probably within two to three minutes, I'm getting a phone call. If I don't answer, then it goes to Mary Ellen and I think, right, except there's like a list. So I think one time recently I didn't answer and it went to Mary Ellen, but that was like an unusual thing.
And I was the last one on the list. They said I was the only one that answered. Everybody else must have answered. I was like, wow, I thought you sure you called the right person.
But it was still within like five, it was still within like less than ten minutes. And that was even unnecessary because when they consider it a life safety, they also immediately call the SRO or the police department. They call us to make sure if there's any other context that the police might need to know. But if we don't answer the life safety, it doesn't matter, they go to the police department. A lot of, and then when it's not a life safety, it's still within a few minutes because I get, if it's a non-life safety, it goes to the school based leadership team and me. So Michelle, Cara, Brett, and me and myself, we get the Melican ones. And usually they're not life safety, right? And then we deal with it as we need to. And then there's a whole system that we document things and then we can cut, that's how we can track that this year we had many more tips. And that that's how we can kind of tell they seem to be related to like things like the signs of suicide because right after we do that, we have this tick up in our tips. We know that and we kind of expect that. So it's probably two to, two to five minutes from when a student would put it in to like, if it was considered life safety, the police and one of us on the phone. So I think it's pretty fast.
Yeah, when I got the call, the SRO was already at the person's house.
Oh, wow. Okay. So that's, that's impressive. Thank you. I didn't realize there was a center. I just thought it was a Google form and someone had to be at their computer waiting.
So that we, before we used the Say Something tip line, I was the school psychologist at the high school and we had a lot of conversations about how do we do that? Because those, you have to have a system where you know somebody is going to answer it. So then when the Sandy Hook, it's through the Sandy Hook Foundation, they came out with this tip line. So they're, they take that ownership, which is nice that we don't. We know they're always answering.
Okay.
So it's, it's really nice. So there's no concern about it getting lost or, you know, they're the ones that are taking the tips for us.
So I would just add that this is our fifth year using the tip line, that it also is that as students move from sixth to seventh, to eighth, to, to the high school, they know that this is available. And there is research around the impact of having a tip line. That is a very important tool for a district to have. It has served us well. And Jennifer's been great around training and working with principals around communicating to students and families. And it is a very important tool that we have in our toolbox to learn about information that we need to know.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a question about the signs of suicide. Any follow up that you do with teachers or teams of teachers? Any pertinent information that might help with, you know, student anxiety or any background information that could help?
Before the program, prior to the signs of suicide, to, because first of all, we know the adults need the information about what the students are hearing so that the adults can respond, right? So last year, when we kind of rebooted it here at Melican, we had some different ways that we shared that information with staff, like staff meeting, different, different vehicles. And we also know like some adults are also impacted by suicide and it can be upsetting for certain adults. So we wanted to also have like available resources for any adults who just this topic can be upsetting for as well. So we shared that out and then every time we've done it, we share back with the faculty, like here's a couple of reminders, like here's the main thing. Because the, one of the main takeaways too is this ACT acronym, acknowledge, care, and then tell. So that's what kids are taught. So that's what we again stress with the teachers. So we sort of, before we do the program, we want to make sure teachers know when it's happening, know some students might be getting pulled out and we try to really communicate that carefully. Because when you do these things, even if it's just the seventh grade, it impacts the entire school, right?
And, and how about, you know, if there is a student who is flagged? Is there communication done with the team of teachers that a student is struggling, you know, mentally? Or is that considered private information?
That's a hard question to answer, right? I mean, I think it really depends on the situation. So I think for, you know, any student, whether there's a concern that's raised through one of these programs or just some other concern, I think we always want to balance that privacy and confidentiality with like who needs to notice. and confidentiality with like who needs to notice support the student. So I think, you know, those are always conversations. I know like the team, like the counselors, probably the administrator, you know, a school psychologist may be involved in like, what do we need to do to support the student? Who are the teachers? And really, you know, giving teachers the tools to support the students. So maybe they know, they need to know some of the information, but not all of it. What you asked, for me, always gets tricky when you have substitute, like how to, how to support students. But I think at the end of the day, you know, teachers are professionals and a lot of times it's really helping them to really know what's going on with their students, right? So they, it's that whole, whole child holistic view. So I think it's really on a case-by-case, the team would kind of decide. I think in general, you know, after the signs of suicide in particular, I think teachers knew, you know, some students were a little like more sensitive sort of in the next few days. And then I know counselors, they have, here at Melican, they have grade level meetings. So I think that is an opportunity to also kind of share, just in general, like if some students might need a little extra support. But there's a lot of different tools that different buildings use for that.
Okay.
But you're right, it's always delicate to, how do you, how do you usually, you know, carefully share information that could be threatening?
I have two more questions though, okay? For the Metro West data, that is self-reported data. So how do you sort of view it in that lens? I know I have been in a classroom situation before, not in this district, where I've witnessed it happening and, you know, some students will finish it in literally 20 seconds. So, you know, how do you sort of take that into consideration while looking at this data?
I think that it's consistent over the years. So if they're lying, they're consistently lying, right? So our data is, it's not off, right? We don't see huge rises or falls. And some, when we do see them, they're explainable, really. You know, I think, you know, with COVID, we saw a rise in mental health, right? But it was everywhere. We compare it to our longitudinal data, but also the youth risk behavior data, which is nationwide, right? We have, we're talking about Metro West, a small area, but a lot of towns do the youth risk behavior, which is a federal, a federal survey. And it, we could line them right up on top of each other. So if they're lying, they're planning it out and doing it consistently. That question comes up all the time. It's a common question.
But it's funny because if you, if kids say that, and then you say, well, did you lie? And they say, well, I told the truth because it was anonymous. So it's funny. But we also have data on, like the signs of suicide, kids' names are attached. So some of the same questions, like have you ever had a suicide attempt? We're asking that where their name's attached and we're asking that where it's anonymous. And they're pretty close responses.
Okay.
So to me, from like a data lens, that gives me a pretty good, like, you know, like, I feel pretty confident that those numbers are within the ballpark, right?
And my last question is just about the data point about in-school fighting. I've heard just anecdotal data about, I guess, maybe specifically the middle school and just sort of a rise in behaviors overall, whether it's fighting or other behaviors. And I guess, where do you sort of see this merge between these classroom behaviors? Maybe some due to social and emotional, you know, needs, some maybe are other needs. Where do you sort of see this merging between, okay, we have this data that's saying that there's this rise. We have maybe anecdotal data from families or teachers. So sort of, where do we go from there?
Can I just, can I just also add that I think it's really important to look at our discipline data and have Principal Kar come and share the information that we have? Because we do have facts and we have historical data that we can compare to. Oftentimes, the narrative that gets shared anecdotally isn't always accurate with the data. So I think it would be really important to ask, you know, Principal Kar to come in and talk about, you know, what we're seeing in terms of student behavior, what types of discipline, reactions are we seeing? Are we seeing more fights than prior years or not? You know, we do have educators reporting that students are presenting differently. And that's something that we're acknowledging and really looking at. But I think it's important to just ask Principal Kar to come back with the data and have a little presentation around what that looks like. And then we can talk about the actual data and what we're seeing.
And I think when we get the full data, we'll have more to look at.
Great. Thank you.
And I would say, you know, I would say that, to me, there's probably skills that kids need to learn to prevent the fighting, right, like, like problem solving, social interactions, right, all of that. And I think like as we continue this work, right, hopefully, kids are going to get those skills, K to five, right, in middle school, to have those safe feelings and emotions, you know, where we weigh those foundational skills. So, you know, I see that as a symptom of maybe a skill deficit, right, that the kids need some, some other way of expressing their frustration or whatever.
Right. And if you look at it, the female and male data is very skewed there, like the, sometimes up to four times as much, the males more than the females. So it's definitely, we'll see a second step is implemented. This was our first year. Hopefully, we'll see that rise in those skills that they need.
Do educators use the lagging skills form? I forget what it's called.
Some do, some do.
Some do, okay.
Yeah. Some of the psychologists do it with, you know, when they're working with the student. Just kind of like what you're asking, like that might be one of those things, like what are some of the supports a student needs and really thinking like, what are the skills that are lagging, especially with our youngest students?
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Getting the duct tape for you next time. Joan, do you have anything?
No.
Good? Yes, of course you can. I'm just joking around. This is a little private joke.
I saw it's only one. Most of my questions, I'd write them down, like a minute later, you'd answer them like, check, okay. But one thing I was wondering, actually, playing on what Lauren was just saying, especially the fighting data sort of triggered, I was wondering if you ever break it up by grade and then follow that grade, right, and say, okay, is it this group of students, somebody's having an issue? And then one thing I would, that also I was thinking about was like this survey, right, versus the discipline data, which I definitely would like to see, but that's just what the teachers say, right? This probably encompasses what the kids are doing in the stairwell when nobody's around, which is that anecdotal data that I usually hear, or when they're passing from one class to another and one kid punches the other one and he falls to the ground and you hear about it. But nobody was around, right? Like kids know how to do that and they're good at it. So I think this data, I would be interested to see how it matches up with the discipline data, but it might capture that more than the discipline data, I would think. But I guess my, I have one more question, but I'll stop. How is there?
It does get broken down, like, as you can say, the male and female is what we chose to show here, but it does get broken down into grade level too.
Okay. Yeah, that would be, so then you can see the difference.
But it is hard to tell over the cohorts, right? Because it's every two years, so you'd have to look at a sixth, our current eighth grader, our sixth graders, and in two years, there'll be eighth graders. I think it's hard to think of the data in that way, to be honest with you, but it does break it into grade levels. So you can kind of see like over, you know, six to 12.
Why don't they do it every year? Why is it every two years?
It's every two years because it's such a process.
It's intense.
It's every two years.
It's a lot of their data.
Okay.
And you answered my other questions, so never mind. Thank you.
Bryce, do you have anything?
No, good, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Greg.
Quick comment.
Yes.
I just want to thank Mary Ellen and Jennifer. I think one of our goals with Healthy and Balanced Learners is really bringing coherence to the work we do. We've always done a lot of work around SEL. I think that now we have a coherent approach. So as students move from grade level to grade level, school to school, there's coherent programs, coherent language. There are a lot of programs to, you know, safety nets for kids. So I just want to thank the two of them for their, for their work. It's evident that, that we're getting there. We're not there yet, but we are much more coherent than we were prior to Mary Ellen and Jennifer lifting, joining our work, which is exciting. So thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much for all you do and for coming in tonight. I appreciate it. The next on the agenda is the preschool tuition increase. Becky, are you?
Sure, I'll start and then I'll turn it over to Becky.
I noticed Jen's not here, so that's why I just assumed it was. Observation of mine.
Jennifer Henry, who is our preschool coordinator for Northborough and Southborough, does a wonderful job leading our preschool programs. It is very complicated. It spans a great, you know, age span of, you know, three, four-year-olds. She's really involved in the community in terms of child, child find and really working with our private organizations. This year, one of the things we learned through our tiered focus monitoring was that the way we were interpreting our ratios for special education students to non-special education students was not the way DASI interpreted the ratio. So we were off. So it required a bit of an adjustment. We were, we had too many, the ratios were off. So what Jennifer did was she really looked at how we can resolve that issue. So we had a short-term solution. And then she also presented a longer-term solution, which is adding a seventh preschool educator, a seventh classroom. So if you can look at the 23, 24, this year, we have 119 students, 56 in Northborough, 63 in Southborough, six integrated classrooms. And then we have 50 special education students and 69 tuition-paying students. It doesn't allow us to meet the ratio requirement. So what Jennifer is proposing and we fully support is adding a seventh integrated classroom. Next year, we'll have 129 students, 64 Northborough, 65 Southborough. And we will begin the year with 33 special education students. That is very fluid at the age three and four-year-olds, that changes. And then we will increase our tuition-paying spots from 69 this year to 96 next year. So there'll be more seats available for tuition-paying students. And it will allow us to meet the ratio threshold and also provide more seats and spaces for parents who want to tuition their kids into the preschool program who are not special education. This does have a financial implication. It's not as if, you know, we're adding a staff member. And Becky can talk about, you know, one of the rationale for the rate increase and where we are in comparison.
Sure. So we really took a look at where the preschool was this current fiscal year. And we also projected out cost of living increases for those staff that are paid through the preschool revolving account because the preschool is funded in three ways, really. There are certain positions that are on the Northborough operational budget, some that are on the Southborough operational budget. And then we also have this preschool revolving account, which is where the tuition funds are deposited. And we have staff members who are paid through that as well. And that fund not only supports the staff member salaries, but it also supports the health insurance for those individuals, as well as purchasing curriculum materials and supplies for the preschool program. So adding an additional staff member to this preschool revolving account and also facing a 7.9% health insurance increase were two contributing factors in what we were looking at in doing our projections for FY '25, that we would not be able to support it at the current tuition rates that we had. And so that's why we're proposing a 5% increase on those tuitions. In your packet, I did lay out what the proposed rates would be. And you can see that for our four-day half programs, it would be an annual difference of $180. For the four full-day programs, it's $360. And then for our four-and-a-half full day and our five full day, it would be $450. And that is over the course of the 10 months that we do allow parents to pay. So we offer a monthly payment plan for, for parents and for families. We've actually adopted a new system where parents can pay online and set up automatic payments, so it's a little bit easier for them. And then we also have a system where families do have a need. They can apply for financial assistance through the district, either full free tuition or reduced tuition based on the qualifying factors that we've outlined to them. So those are, that's the rationale behind this increase.
Yes.
I have two questions. Where are these classes held? And do we have, I know we, the answer would be yes, but do we have the room for an extra classroom? And do we provide transportation for the preschool?
So we, we have a combined preschool program. We partner with Southborough. The preschool program is housed at Finn School in Southborough. Students who require, do receive transportation if they receive special education services, but tuition families drive their kids to, to the program. We do have classroom space for the seventh classroom.
Thank you.
Bryce?
So two questions. One is, can you clarify what the ratio differential was between what we were using and what DASI had as their interpretation?
I will get that to you. I don't have it off the top of my head. It was, we were off one or two students, so we had.
But that we had more, we needed more non-IEP students? Because the shift in your projections for last year are heavily in favor of non-IEP students.
Yeah, so we, I don't want to accurately mistake this.
Yeah, I mean, it was a, the, part of the complexity, as I understood it, was our administrators actually felt that our ratios were better, but it didn't match this very particular language of DASI. And so it had to do with the ratio of gen ed students to students on IEPs.
Our class sizes were too large. So if we had 14 students in a class, that was outside.
Wasn't about the ratio of IEP, non-
Teacher, teacher-student ratio? We have to match on both areas.
So we had too many, too many students.
Okay.
And, and the ratio would, and that overall class size was too large. So this actually addresses that, provides more seats to tuition-paying students and allows us to level out the ratios. I will have Jennifer create a quick summary of what was and what is going to be in the ratios.
And also, given the, given the increase of the staff, the increase to the revenue center that is the preschool revolving fund is or is not adequate to cover the additional staff increase?
It will be adequate to cover this. Yes, and that's why we're.
So, but we're not anticipating an OpEx expense increase to either Northborough or Southborough? Okay?
For, you said with the 5% increase. Is that with the 5% increase with the 96 spots filled? Is there?
Well, that's using the assumption that, that there are more, there are roughly 30 more.
So there are people that are, is there like a waitlist type thing? You know you've got the 96 filled.
That's the question we asked because it's, it's one, conceptually, to say if we fill these seats, it's cost neutral.
Yeah, that's, it's one thing if you have a waitlist, but if you don't, that's kind of like.
So we had a lot of conversation, though. We are very confident that those seats will be filled. And we need those seats to be filled, those slots to be filled in order to have it be cost neutral. And we, you know, we're pretty confident that will happen.
And I did factor in the possible, like, with adding additional students, there may be families also who require needs. So I did some calculations based on the ratios of the population we have right now so that I could factor in, okay, X number of families may require free tuition. And so all of that has been considered.
Yeah, thank you. I just was, I was going to kind of follow up with that question, which was then how did you derive the anticipated IEP student number? And so that's taking an aggregate percentage of the amount of families, current IEP students, because you're dropping a decent amount based on what you're carrying now.
So it's the, you know, the three-year-olds moving to the four-year-old program.
Four is going to five.
It's also child find. It's really working with our integrated preschools and understanding who the incoming cohort of students and what their needs are.
Okay.
Obviously, that's variable. I will share with you that Jen Henry does a wonderful job about projecting and she monitors this closely. And, you know, again, one of the questions we pushed on is, are we going to fill those tuition seats that we're adding? And she was very confident that we will. And she hasn't been wrong in the past. And it's a very coveted program.
Don't say anecdotally, that would make sense to me, that you're going to have those filled, yeah.
When will the registration program open?
They've already started.
I was going to say it's probably.
They've started, yes.
Probably January, usually, preschool's kind of all in January.
And how is the registration going?
It's going well.
It is?
Yes, yep, yep. The numbers. Yes. Yep. Yep. The numbers are where we're expecting them to be. So, yep.
So, students who qualify for special education services then do not pay tuition? Is that what you're saying? So, as, as students progress through the school year and then, as you said, may require services later on, would they stop payment?
If they're identified as requiring the services, then yes, we would make that adjustment.
And was that what you were speaking to of you sort of have a little bit of cushion in case, you know?
That would be one scenario. Yes. Yep. Yep.
And so, are there three sessions? Do you have like three-year-olds, four-year-olds, and five-year-olds? Is, or what, like, what are the eight, or is all the classes mixed by ages? Do you, I don't...
We have multi-age classrooms.
Multi-age classrooms. Okay. And two-point-nine, you, two-point-nine into, okay. Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know if it's the COVID boom or what, but at the preschool I work at, we're adding another preschool class as well. So, it's kind of looking like that's just, it must be the ten percent increase of, you know, their downward upward trajectory of the NESDAQ. Great. It's coming back. All righty. And we're going to take a motion, I believe, to approve this or do we just...
I can make a motion?
Okay. Go ahead.
I move to approve the proposal tonight to increase the pre-K tuition for fiscal year twenty-five by five percent.
Second?
Motion by Lauren, seconded by Joan. Any discussion? All in favor? Joan, was your hand up?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Unanimous. It passes. Thank you so much. Thank you, Jennifer, for all your hard work organizing the preschool. And Becky, with the financial backing and knowledge and support. We appreciate your help. Town meeting recap.
Let's just watch the thirteen and a half.
I was, let's, let's play, play.
Can we relive the whole thing?
Cue it up. Cue it up. Let's cue it up.
I mean, I can, I can start.
Yeah.
I think that from a school budgeting perspective, I think, you know, it was evident that we had strong support for the pre-K through eight Northborough budget. So, we're very appreciative of the citizens who attended and passed the budget. Also, at the regional level, the budget passed, which is our two, obviously, major articles that we present. And then all of the warrant articles that we have presented, from the pneumatic controls to asbestos to...
Hot water.
Hot water.
Solar, leasing the roofs and feasibility study.
And feasibility study were all passed. So, I think it's, we're very appreciative of the town. And I would, would share that the feasibility study for Peaslee was an important milestone that we are ahead of the curve because of the timeline. But I think that will help move that work forward through eligibility. And I just want to, I have two correction, corrections to make on some of the data that was shared at, by citizens. And the first really is enrollment. So, as you know, we monitor enrollment very carefully. We use NESDAQ projections than we have historically to monitor enrollment over time. Since two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty-three, we've seen a ten percent decline in K through eight enrollment in Northborough. That was projected. That is not a surprise. And if you look at the next ten years, we are projected to see a ten percent increase. So, we will be at kind of equilibrium of where we were in two thousand and fourteen. We, NESDAQ does not look at any upcoming projects, building projects. It only looks at permitted projects. Obviously, with MBTA-adjacent community or any other type of building project that will have an impact on school enrollment that we'll have to consider and take into account. I would just say that, you know, NESDAQ is what we use for projections and it's been very accurate in that we'll just have to monitor building projects. Avalon has had an impact on enrollment in our district. We have one hundred and fifty-nine students currently enrolled in our district who live in Avalon apartment complex. One of the challenges we have as a district is our neighborhood school model. So, elementary students who live in Avalon attend the Proctor Elementary School. And because, you know, the number, what we have to do is we have to redistrict to meet the class size. And it does create a transportation hardship. It requires us to transport students out of their neighborhood schools to other neighborhood schools. And that's been challenging. So, I think it's just something we'll keep an eye on. I think that I have asked Tim McEnery to schedule a meeting so I can meet with him and the town planner and really share enrollment. But also, talk about how our schools are used and the space that we have and don't have, the specialized programs that do exist in our school. Because I don't want, I think the message can't be there's, they have plenty of space to absorb enrollment. That's not accurate. So, really working together to help paint that picture of what enrollment looks like, how we use space and what space is lacking. I think it partners nicely with our eligibility, you know, being invited into eligibility for the MSBA. It'll give us an opportunity to talk about, as a community, what types of spaces are really important and how can we meet the future needs of students and families in the community through space.
Yeah. I think it's important that, as what you just said about the ten percent decline, it's that they might be numbers declined, but it's not like the space is the same. You know, and yes, the building structure is the same, but the dynamics of the school and the dynamic of the student body, it causes a shift in the classrooms. And our specialized programs, as you said, is changed. And we know Peaslee School, how they've lost art rooms and, you know, moved to libraries and to a classroom and, you know, all that. So...
And we just add that the, you know, if you have a thousand student enrollment and you have a ten percent decline, that's a hundred students who are then distributed across K through eight. So, it's, it's not as if they are a cohort of third graders and you can reduce third grade. It's a bit of economy of, of, you know, where those students are distributed. So, I think it's something that we, I know the school committee has always kept an eye on. We monitor closely and we, I think we need to partner with the town and the town planner really on, on enrollment trends and what we're seeing. I would say that we are the experts in school enrollment. And, you know, it's something that we're very knowledgeable about. It will be part of the eligibility phase as well if we're MSBA. The second comment I just want to make is that there was a statement that we could lose funding for MSBA if the MBTA-adjacent community, issue is not resolved in the community. MSBA is a completely quasi-independent organization that, again, receives its funding through a penny of the six-point-two-five percent sales tax. MSBA is not going to take away its invitation into eligibility or consider our movement to feasibility because of anything that happens with MBTA-adjacent law that we're trying to comply with as a community. It is independent. So, I just wanted to make that clear.
Does anybody have any other questions about town meeting recap or anything?
I guess my other comment would be when you have that meeting, which would be really great, is the other thing to consider besides space is cost, right? Which I was surprised nobody said at the meeting. I think I was watching that part on the TV. But it's obviously a lot more expensive now to, you know, per pupil than it was ten years ago or twenty years ago when they were bringing up numbers from twenty years ago where the school had that many students. Well, each student costs a lot less. And as you said earlier, we're the biggest part of town budget. We were the biggest increase if people were watching on that, you know, the select board presentation. So, that's just something else that I would definitely bring up during the meeting and the town should be aware of when they are making decisions.
I just make a comment too on the biggest tax increase. So, which is true. It's the largest contributor to the increase people experience. But our overall school budget was up three-point-nine-nine percent. So, there's, there's a ratio there that wasn't represented in that number. So, I think it's important also to, to, you know, it's not as if the school budget went up ten percent. That's why it's three-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. We are the largest portion of the budget. Therefore, it's going to be the largest contributor to a tax bill. So, I just think that's important for us to remember as we kind of look at school budget. It wasn't as if we brought in a ten percent increase to our overall operational budget. It was a very, what I consider a reasonable increase at three-point-nine-nine percent. If you look at other town departments' increase, their, theirs, ours was one of the lowest.
Yeah, it was lower.
So, it's, I think it's how you tell the story, which is really important.
That's why it exists.
Right. No, it was definitely in line with surrounding towns. And you guys put in tons and tons of work, which I hope is appreciated by people in the community too, that you're making sure that every dollar is spent wisely and to create the best school system possible. Yeah.
Kelly? And I'd just like to say that you guys started that budget in October, which makes it June, July, August, November. Five more months, you're starting it all over again. Right? Yippee. But I think that the transparency and bringing it into the forefront at each of the meetings, when you did have that preliminary budget and going over, the good discussion that happened with the board members, helped to come with a budget that was accepted by the town, accepted by the town boards. Unanimous if it was the solar, if it was any of the other projects, capital project improvements, if it was approved by the appropriations, the financial, the town boards, any other town boards. And also, I'd like to thank the people that have worked on those. We have the solar committee. People gave a lot of time to get to that presentation last week. And then also to thank the voters for their support, for the over three hundred people that were in attendance and did support the, the town budget. And then, you know, and seeing the discussion was positive and not negative just proves we did start early. You guys started early and you're very thorough about it and listen to all the stakeholders. So, kudos to all of you and rest for the next five months.
Yeah. I, I think it's important to note that is, that is a collective effort from school-based leaders to the finance department and team, to the school committee, to working with the town. It is a lot of work, but I think we have a lot of great minds working on it. And it's not about the money. It's about what we want to, how we want to impact the learning experience. And that's not lost on us as we kind of think about what budgets we're moving forward. So, congratulations, Becky.
Thanks, Becky.
We are moving on to legislative update.
So, in your packet, your memo, I did outline the House budget and some of the changes. The, the key change that I would note is that universal free meals is fully funded in the House budget proposed. And also, we're seeing an increase in minimum local aid per student from thirty dollars from the governor's budget to a hundred and four dollars in the House budget. So, that is increased chapter seventy money that the town will save.
So, that's what...
Did you see? Sorry.
Go ahead. No, no. Go ahead. No.
Did I catch that? Did you catch the number?
Thirty to one oh four? Is that what it was?
It sounds like a lot of money, but it's, you know, it's...
No, it's another, it's another shock to the increase size than it is the actual dollar amount.
So, that money will, it goes directly to the town? So, our, our budget was predicated on getting X number of dollars for chapter seventy funding. So, the town can expect more if this budget passes.
That's, that's what I was, yeah. So, this is the House recommendation, but the governor's recommendation was lower.
Usually, the governor's is the floor.
Okay. So, it's not like the governor's like, well, this is all I'm going to sign on for. But the House is like, no, no, no. We want this. We want this. Like, it's...
The House and then the Senate and then the conference committee. And then that will be the recommended budget. So, still in negotiation.
Yeah. Then the next timeline, I guess, would be the Senate releasing their version of the budget. So, it'll be interesting to see what they do with that number. So...
Maybe it will go up.
Yeah, maybe.
And so, the House would be like Kate Donahue and Milk and, and then it's going to be... Robin is going to be, okay. Great. All right. Approval of grants and donations. We have one grant on our agenda. It is the approval of the fiscal year twenty-four FC one-six-one. Evaluate and Select High Quality Instructional Materials. Implementation Network Support Grant, increase amount of forty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars.
So, it seems like we're, every meeting, we're approving new grants. Through the artwork of the teaching and learning team, Dr. Reinhardt. You want to give a short?
Sure. I can give a quick, I can give a quick explanation. There's actually two grants, so I'll, I'll do both of them back-to-back. The first one that Kelly just mentioned is that Kathy Lizotte, who is our math coordinator, participated in a network called the Evaluating Selecting High Quality Instructional Materials Network that, that DSC runs. We had done this previously with ELA and Megan Kelty. We initially got fifteen thousand dollars from them, which you previously approved, which paid for having a committee to look at elementary math materials. We made our selection, we went through our selection process. And then we're eligible for an increase in that to help us with now the implementation of that decision. So, we are going to do a phase-one implementation of new elementary math materials and then full implementation in twenty-five, twenty-six. So, this increase will help us get the materials for phase-one for a small number of teachers to be our first implementers and help us kind of work through the kinks. And it actually is going to also help us to get some of the material, to get teacher additions for all teachers so that we can start the professional learning for twenty-five, twenty-six. So, that's the first grant.
And is that for, you said first and second, is it going to be like all third grade? Or is it going to be like one third grade here, one fourth grade here, one sec, like, what is the...
Great question. We're still finalizing that. But the goal is that we are hoping to have a pair of teachers per grade level between the two towns. So, there might be some redundancy because we have teachers who are on the committee who are already familiar and are likely to be part of this.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
Because there's a lot to share about the implementation.
Yep.
The committee. I think it should be a separate presentation.
Yep. Yes. Yes.
The work that we're doing.
Yes. I agree. There is a lot to share. I could go into a lot. So, that's what this grant is about. And yes, we could go down a big rabbit hole. That's what that first grant is about. And the second grant is the Apple Seeds Materials and Professional Development Grant. That, Megan Kelty wrote this grant. And it will give us a set of decodable books by Apple Seeds as the publisher. They're really, really nice color-printed decodable books for K through two. And we'll be able to have a set for every classroom. And it just enlarges our library for small group instruction at the early literacy level.
Great. Thank you so much.
What's the decodable book?
A decodable book means that the words in the book are, they're not, they're, they follow the rules. So, you can decode them using the phonics rules that they're learning. And these align well with our Project Read programming around foundational skills. So, if kids have learned, for example, how to decode CVC words, you could give them a book that has CVC words and is not going to go beyond that and expect them to be able to read things that they haven't learned how to decode yet. It's a great question. And Megan would have given a much more technical answer, but I think that hopefully made sense.
So, we can make a... So, um, we can make a motion to accept both of them, if somebody wants to.
I can read it.
Okay.
Um, I move to approve the F Y twenty-four F C one six one evaluate and select high-quality instructional materials. Implementation network support grant increase in the amount of forty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And to approve the Apple Seeds Materials and Professional Development Grant Award in the amount of F Y, in the amount of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. And that's from, um, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four.
Motion by Lauren, seconded by Bryce. Any discussion? Seeing none. Uh, hand, a roll call, hands votes, all unanimous in favor, passes. Thank you so much. Thank you for all the hard work and getting us these grants.
Yes.
Um, much appreciation.
Yes, thank you, Capuletsot and Megan Kelty.
Yes, thank you. Uh, old business, none at this time. Superintendent reports to the committee, starting with enrollment. And we did kind of talk a little bit about it, so.
So in your packet is the enrollment as of April twelfth, twenty twenty-four. And we are monitoring, um, second grade enrollment at this point in time. And that is where we see there could be the need to add a section. So we're looking at that very closely, um, but at this point in time, we're, we're just monitoring and we'll keep the committee updated if we see any variances or changes, um, that we're not expecting.
Have we ever had ten in a grade before? Ten sections overall?
I think we have.
Have we had it? Multiple schools have three, yeah?
Probably ten years ago, right?
Ten years ago, we did.
Are there ten classrooms in grade three?
Well, there's nine right now in grade two, which would then be grade three.
No, I mean, grade three now. It says three at Lincoln, if I'm reading right, three at Lincoln, three at Peaslee, and the two at the other two schools, right?
Yes, and-
I'm seeing three, two, two, two.
So next year there will be, there will be two at Lincoln, three at Peaslee, two at Proctor, and two at Z.
Yeah.
So there'll be-
But yes, currently we have two levels at third grade, which means we're at ten.
We're at ten, yeah, the current third grade.
Oh, I was. I, I wasn't looking- I was looking-
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I was looking at the other one.
It would seem unwise to make any assumption that our enrollment would go down. And so I guess, given just as I was, like, kind of processing what you said came out of the town meeting, I either wasn't, I don't, I thought I was listening, but I didn't really hear those arguments, at least they didn't stick and stick out to me.
I don't think it was the night that you were there that-
So it was a, it was a following night?
It was, it was, it was night, it was night three. It was night three.
You weren't glued to you-
It wasn't the first, it, now, it wasn't the first time you came back, it was the second time you had to come back for the town meeting. It was night three.
And like last article.
So, okay, so, okay.
Yeah.
I would think, just given the development of housing in, in general across the board within the state, we are not, we should not be anticipating a reduction in enrollment, period.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, interesting to notate that we have a dip, and twenty years, it'll be back to that baseline. Twenty fourteen by twenty thirty-four will reflect the same numbers. I would see us just kind of going up and to the right from there.
Yeah, and be, because I have to look at those things for my job. Two thousand eight, I think, was the lowest birth rate, and then it's just been going up from there.
And then it has been up.
It's been, birth rate's been going up. So like at college, we're like, okay, two thousand eight to twenty twenty-five is gonna be our, yeah, our dip. So, yeah, I think we're just gonna grow because the population has just been growing.
The one thing we did in Southborough, we were, you know, as we were thinking about, um, M S B A and school reconfiguration, we did have a demographer work with us more closely, so we did have a third-party demographer look at, um, enrollment so that we had two sources, N S D A and a third party. The one, uh, attribute that the demographer added to the equation was mobility rate. How many people are moving in and out of ti- out of town. So which is, which is important in communities like Northborough as the population is aging, if the real estate market softens and people can get out of, you know, move to smaller homes, because they can find, um, apartments. It's something to consider as we move forward.
Yeah, and Southborough doesn't have any large housing complex like Avalon and like that, that huge-
But nothing permitted.
Is, that could warrant like a huge, like, yeah.
So one of the things we did was we added, you know, we worked with a demographer and we added ten percent mobility rate. And we added some factors in there to, to really, although projects weren't permitted, some, some space if things changed.
Mm-hmm. Now, does a demographer look at like, within the population, different groups, for example, right? Cause I would imagine if, as you said, the housing market softens a little bit, people who have been stuck in their homes, but maybe their, you know, their kids are grown, they might sell. And now we got a huge influx of kids while the population could actually be decreasing if, depending on the demographics.
Well, that's like the Northgate neighborhood. I mean, we've got still a bunch of original owners, you know, and they're-
They don't want, who, right?
I mean, right now, they're not, but I mean, they're gonna be leaving sooner, you know, and, I mean, we even have a few houses that, that they're still living there, but their grandkids have moved into the house. Their adult grandchildren have moved into the house with them, you know, to have.
Okay.
You know, so it's definitely gonna be a younger population increase, you know, so.
And then the second report, um, is the monthly general fund expenditure report. Becky?
So April was actually a fairly quiet month in terms of the monthly general fund, um, report. We really only saw our variance of seventy-five hundred from the previous month's report. Um, so I guess it's, we're gearing up now for the end-of-year fund. Um, so it was our little break, Joan, before we have to start that process. Um, so as of April thirtieth, we did have one hundred and sixty-seven thousand remaining on the bottom line. As I said, it's an increase of actually seventy-five hundred dollars, and that is from some of the work that we've been doing and looking at where we, um, anticipate being at the end of the year. Um, we have, um, started to come up with a plan, and we're finalizing that plan, um, for the fiscal year end um, in terms of, uh, any type of expenditures, um, and reviewing open purchase up, um, orders with our buildings and our directors, just to make sure that people, um, are ordering the things that they said they were going to order or that we're paying for things that may, maybe have already been delivered and we have not received the invoice for yet, so. So that's some of the work that we're doing. And then the other big piece is tomorrow afternoon, there is a call with Desi um, to talk about the Circuit Breaker extraordinary relief claim, um, and what the status is of that. So we expect to have more information on our claim. Um, I'm hoping if they don't release it right after that call, um, I'd say probably within the next few days, we're going to know where we stand with that. And we are anticipating funds, um, for both extraordinary relief and then also for that supplemental budget that they passed for the special education tuition.
Motion, Joan, or comment?
Um, I move that we accept the, um, Northborough Public School District F Y twenty twenty-four budget monthly general fund expenditure report as of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four until audited.
Second.
Motion by Joan, seconded by Bryce. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Unanimously passes. Thank you so much. Polis, uh, uh, school committee member reports. Um, I will report on N S P A. They have their Going the Distance Awards this month on May twenty-first. And then they will have their, um, election of their officers at the end of the month on, uh, May six, no, what is it? May thirty-first, yeah. So the twenty-first and the thirty-first for N S P A. The calendar, um, is it Calendar Study Group? Yes, the Calendar Study Group. We've been meeting, um, we had great, uh, meeting, um, we invited, um, some of the people that are on the committee to speak about their religion or the religions they observe, to hear about different traditions. Um, so we've been educated on that. Um, and the next step, I believe we are going to be, um, maybe list priorities maybe, or? I think is that kind of like what we're-
We'll start talking about-
Talking about more logistics of the actual calendar and, yeah, we're, you know, I mean, the, the key things with the calendar is that we have, due to contract obligations, we have a firm start date and a firm end date. And then you have legal holidays that you have to take off. And then you have to squeeze in a hundred and eighty days within that period of time, so.
When you say firm start date, firm end date?
Uh, contracts say that they cannot start any sooner than the Monday before-
Labor Day.
Labor Day.
Okay.
And the end date is for fiscal year, you can't go into July.
How can you possibly have a mandated end date?
It's cause-
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, yeah.
Because the fiscal year?
Yeah, the fiscal year.
But even then, like, how can you mandate that in a, kind of in a contract?
Uh, that part's not contract, that's the state contract. So state con, state law is-
Given the things that can come up.
Yeah, you're mandated to have, to finish your hundred and eighty days by June thirtieth, and you have to build, build in five days for any contingency.
So then how can we mandate a start date?
Is that the contract?
That's the contract negotiation. That's collective bargaining.
Concerning.
Yeah.
Because given our effort to increase the amount of days in which we would give schools to be closed, we are only allowed to push in one direction. And that, that feels unfair to the community and to the administrators to have it dictated that we could only move through June and not back through August.
Well, I think the Monday before Labor Day is like a full week before other summer students start. So that still would give us a couple of days to back up if we move professional development days. I mean, we could renegotiate it, but I think a lot of families wouldn't wanna go any earlier than that either.
I know, I know, I wouldn't be against you starting. I mean, there's, there's no camp opportunities starting the seventeenth of August. So, so given, given what we've booked in our community for available summer activity, that's just disappointing to hear. I guess I did not realize that.
It's not, uh, it's very common that contracts speak to when the school year-
I know, I, I understand, but given the work of the, yeah. What is the, what is the makeup of the committee? Of the poli, the school-
For the calendar, um, we have superintendent, sister superintendents, uh, school committee members, two of us. Um, we've got principals, students, yeah, we've got a few people from the high school.
And there's a teacher, one teacher, I think.
A couple of teachers.
Religious leaders.
This is principal, um, religious leaders.
And you probably have Southborough School Committee and Regional School Committee.
Yes.
Are there meeting notes that are coming out of this?
Um.
So we do have our agendas.
We have our agendas, not like formal minutes from the meeting.
Are, are those, um, meetings open that anybody could attend in an audience?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's not a, it's not a posted public meeting, so if anyone is interested in joining the work.
Well, and if any one of us were to show up, we would have to-
It's virtual, we'd have to post it if-
Yeah, okay, alright.
But, but your question about whether public can come is a good one. I was actually just thinking about also showing up, but then realizing that that would create a bit of an open meeting issue.
I mean, which is, i- is what it is. I mean, if that's what you guys want, we can, Cheryl can post it. It's, it's not, you know.
Could we get a list of the meeting day?
But posting it with our attendance, then we would need minutes taken from the meeting.
Essentially, this study group is a subcommittee of the coalition. So it's, it's a subcommittee of a subcommittee, um, is what this is.
Well, we amended amendments last week, so-
We did, and then amended the amended.
So, and is there a set of goals or priorities for this group?
Yeah, so I, I think that the Calendar Study Group that, um, convened last year, it's a continuation of that, of that work. Um, and really to, the goal really is to develop, um, some draft calendars to bring back to the school committees for consideration. And for the school committees for the discussion and conversation.
Are there any, um, is there any contract, is there any union representation from the teaching staff? There is.
Those teachers. So do you have a goal?
But teachers, but, but representatives of the body.
Are they on the, I don't-
So I think, um, I'll have to look through the membership.
I can't remember.
So is there a, are you looking at doing just twenty-five, twenty-six? Or are you looking at three, three circles?
Not, not twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six.
I said twenty-five, twenty-six, cause we have twenty-four, twenty-five.
We have twenty-four, twenty-five, so we're looking at twenty-five, twenty-six.
And do you have a date that you wanna bring that to the school committee?
September School Committee.
September?
Yep.
That's when we generally-
That's when we always look at them, yeah.
I mean, that's quick.
Yeah, I mean, we've been working for the last-
Nine years?
Yeah, I know. Um, but we've been working on it, um, regularly, like, every other week or something like that for the last month or so. So, um, I think our next meeting's in a, I guess, next week. Next week, and I think we're gonna divide up some things and-
And, and, uh, just to be clear, our goal is not to, um, be prescriptive in our work, but to come up with scenarios that then the school committees can vote on in, in the fall.
Okay.
Similar to like the three possible schedules that went out to the survey a couple of years ago.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Uh, the other report is I attended the Policy Subcommittee. I heard one policy and then you guys took over the rest of them, so. Um, I don't know if there was anything major to report on in the Policy Subcommittee.
Um, I think that i- in line with the, the conversation we just had, um, we did discuss to, um, bring the Religious Observance Policy back to the table um, so that as the Calendar Study Group is going through its work, um, we can at least have it sort of active on our minds. It's not something we're delving into right this minute, but we will sort of have it ready to go, um, as our conversation continues about the calendar. And as we get, um, you know, either more feedback about the Wellness Days and, and more feedback from parents and students. Um, we talked at length about, um, a policy about, um, students and their involvement with, um, uh, with school committees. Um, it's a policy that was proposed by, um, by students, um, some who have graduated, some who are current. And we had a really great discussion about that.
Yeah, the, the one thing that kind of came up for, to kick back to each individual committee would be, um, entertaining the idea of having an eighth-grade representative kind of come to the school committee meetings somehow. I'm not sure, I, I liked the idea of getting kids involved in civics. I know that eighth grade has a great civics program, things like that. I'm not sure of the timing of our meetings and the age of our students, if it's conducive to have an eighth grader. It's one thing if you're a high school student and you can drive and stuff like that, but to have an eighth grader here, you would most likely have to have a parent here that's adding another constraint, and I don't know. I don't even know if there's a need, but-
It would be an interesting thing, though, to consider having that access.
Yeah.
Um, for a, an eighth grader who wanted to-
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing, it's, we don't know, is there a need and of their grade, of the school, of everything, yeah. I don't, I don't-
An idea, an idea form, it's pretty, it sounds pretty cool.
Yeah.
So I, after we had our conversation, I think it, I think it would be interesting to bring it up as, uh, an actual discussion topic at a future meeting, um, to hear maybe what some other schools do um, and whether there is representation by eighth graders in any other area towns, um, and what that would look like. Um, I do think that we do have some civically engaged students, whether they exist every year as eighth graders or not. Um, I do think that we do have some civically engaged students, whether they exist every year as eighth graders or not, I think it could, uh, it could flux. Um, but, uh, I think if there's an opportunity there and a student is interested, I, I don't see why not. Um, but I think that we would need to sort of decide how we would envision student involvement. Um, so I don't know, what do you think about putting it, uh, like next year or, or June or September?
You were gonna say something.
I could save it for if there's gonna be a discussion, I just had, had thoughts about it too. Yeah, cause I guess.
Yeah, yeah, I would think, I would think maybe this should be like tabled for like a September maybe topic or October type thing, I don't know. I, I don't know, June, we've got a lot of.
I think, I mean, I'll just share very quickly that I think it's definitely worth exploring, I think any opportunity to have students participate in.
Well, I love that when we had the math, the math.
You're probably gonna say something, it could be that we have a student report every committee meeting and. That report could rotate, so we could have ten kid, different kids give a report from their student perspective, so there's a lot of ways. We can involve students at the high school level, it is mass general law, they sit on the committee, it's just, there's just more, um, structure to it. Um, but I think there's definitely ways we can involve student voice and perspective and. Now would encourage a future conversation.
Um, we talked about a, a couple other, um, other policies, um, we didn't really get, get. Much traction on those, so, uh, I guess we'll, we'll bring those up at another time, but, uh. And then I feel like I went to one other subcommittee meeting, Policy Coalition, I guess that's it.
Bryce, anything?
Nothing, hoping to get to LPAC tomorrow night.
Yes, LPAC tomorrow night and then International Night, which you are all invited is. Six to eight thirty at Algonquin, so I think that should be an exciting night. And then just a quick report that, um, NEF's trivia night, uh, was a success. We did have a principal, uh, team and then the middle school had a team.
They won.
Won.
Really?
Yeah, middle school teachers.
Well, it's Michelle Carb.
Gretchen was on it?
Gretchen Bean, Bud Richardson and his daughter. All the thought partners. And they, um, they. It was a lot of fun, a great event and just again appreciative of NEF and, and the organization's work supporting what we do.
If anyone wants to know, that evening I had another trivia night, um.
Did you win?
And, uh.
We came in last.
We're a lot of educators.
We did come in sixth place.
Congratulations.
Well, we, we were in second place until there was a little rearranging at the end, but they didn't rearrange the results, so, but we were. According to the results, yeah, we, we needed to be born to runner up, I was like, I think we might have cursed ourselves. That was way better than I expected to do, so.
Um, one other member report, I guess I can kind of touch upon a little bit, which is kind of a member report. But it kind of also goes into potential future agenda items, is that we did have, um, a large influx of emails. To the school committee, um, in regards to, um, a North Borough having an all fifth grade field trip. Overnight field trip and an eighth grade overnight field trip to Washington DC. So I appreciate all of the citizens who have reached out to the school committee, um, over the past day and a half. Um, and we did receive them all and we've all received them all, um. Unfortunately, it's, field trips aren't in the, the direct purview of the school committee. Uh, we can't say, um, direct the superintendent or the principals to have field trips. Um, what the school committee does is we approve field trips, so overnight field trips, they have to come to us and we will approve them. So it isn't an administration type of, um, thing. So with that said, I feel like there could be a discussion, a potential future agenda item if we all want. So when we go to the future agenda items, we can decide if we want to add something like that.
Would that be a budget goal?
I guess it depends on how we wanna do it, so that's what, I mean, we might wanna put it on the agenda. Whether it be in June or September for a discussion on field trips in general, like, and, and do we want? Field trips part of our curriculum and do we want to somehow absorb those into our budget goals and things like that, so, yes.
Um, I think, because I know that my, my two children do go to the DC trip, okay?
Did you write a letter, Joan?
What?
Did you write a le- no, just kidding.
Did you get it, the email? You didn't get it, I sent it to you ten times, um. No, I, I don't know why it was dropped, okay, but I think that for whatever reason, I would want to direct. The superintendent to talk to the principals first. About that, to see what is their direction, because they're in charge of their school. What do, what do they actually see, what would the cost be of that? I, you know, I read all the emails that you sent to us, glad that you forwarded them to us on that, but I agree with what you said, it isn't. That isn't our pur- purview unless we put it through the budget, budget is ours unless we say, okay, we're gonna.
Budget and policy, you know?
But I think that because of that interest. I would like to direct the administration to talk to the principals when Burke has his meeting. And see what their interest is and see, and then come back to us and somehow let us know what are their pros and cons and I. I'd like to know why it dropped, maybe it was during COVID that it dropped.
No, long time.
It was before that. I know that we use, they, the students flew from two airports.
The Frank children were the la- were their.
Yeah, I think it was because the Frank children, probably when they were in the hotel room and they had the teachers outside with all the hotel window. Doors opening, it was probably my kids, um, yeah, they're forty now, they still haven't grown up, um, but. Uh, they flew from Logan. And half flew from, uh, Rhode Island. But they took buses, we brought the kids here, their luggage and everything, that we, parents paid for. So, I would just like to know, cause I know that we've had, I went on Nature's Classroom, I think it's absolutely fantastic. But there are some schools that have and some don't, so what is the reason, I think we gotta find out the reasons. Why not all the schools are joining before we go to the parents, because it is school-based. That's my feeling.
Great, alright.
And don't put my kids in the, um, minutes. I'm not getting names.
Alright, um, moving on to the next thing, we have, uh, education policy, none at this time. Policy development and distribution, we have a first reading of a new, um, policy for donations, sponsorships and advertising policies. It was in your packet, um, I did go through it and, um, looked at it. There were a few notes that I had from it, um, some were, as I said, I, I think you took a, um. A region, um, policy and were adapting it, so there was some instances that they mentioned like. ARHS and it, and, and things like that, and then like boosters, I, I don't think they have boosters K through eight. So, things like that, I just, I wasn't sure at what stage this was and what directions and, and questions that. Um, that we had, so that was just my thing with the first read, it's been. A long time, I've been so interested in a policy being created, um, I think this policy will be, um, a great help. Um, for the collaboration amongst PTOs and all people who are interested in donating to the district. Um, to help support our children in education, so, um, yeah, so I don't know. If anybody else has anything else, I guess we can just pass it to Kristen and Lauren, I guess, are you guys, or where is this?
So.
How is this going, cause it's just, is, are you guys working with Southborough too, or is it just us that is doing it?
It was just us.
Okay.
Um, do you, do you want to give some background, do you want me to summarize, what do you want to do?
You can summarize, I think the background of it kinda came from us, right, cause we were like.
It's the PTOs, it's for the good.
Well, when we were talking about it too, I was, one thing we discussed was try, trying not to get too nitty gritty, right? So to leave it a little bit open so that we're not trying to plan for every single nuance, but it gives like scum guidelines. Um, which I thought this did, I liked this policy when I read it, I didn't have too many comments actually in our subcommittee meeting because. I thought it was, it was dumb.
I think we talked a lot about how we wanted this policy to establish the role of the school committee in these areas. So donations, scholarships and advertising and the, the PTOs are mentioned in a couple places. Um, but we also discussed how, um, PTOs, because they're nonprofits. Have their own sets of bylaws and rules that they follow, um, so, uh, you know. We talked about the distinction between, you know, we can have our guidelines and each PTO also has their own guidelines as well. Um, so our policy is school committee focused. With a sprinkling of PTOs, if that makes sense, um, so, you know, we, we sort of ended our meeting saying. I wonder what Kelly will think of this. Um, so, we will take any and all, um, thoughts, so that we can bring it back to, um, our subcommittee, rework it. Uh, we did not look at the language too much, we really discussed just the picture of it, the vision. Um, we looked at definitions, crowdfunding, et cetera, um, those bullet points at the end, yeah, I didn't even, when I read this before, I didn't even catch the ARHS. Probably just didn't scroll all the way down.
It was just, yeah, it was just like those two things. And then like I just wanted to confirm like that we have the same, like if it's, because I know some, I know we have some joint policies. But then we don't have some policies, so that's why I just wanted to, I was just gonna check those things, but then like down here, it says North Borough and South Borough, so it's kind of like. I didn't know if like all of it, but, I mean, we can talk about it.
I, I, I guess what we were, we were wondering is, do, from your lens of, of being involved in a PTO. When you look at this, um.
I think.
Do you feel like there is some guidance that PTOs can take from this policy?
There is definitely some guidance, I definitely had some questions for, like example, when it says. Other programs will fall within the obligations of the district, should we define what obligations of the district are somewhere? I don't know, like, you know, just in general, but then at the same time, like I was thinking, I was thinking of some. Some things that I know PTOs have bought in the past and I was thinking like, well, should those have really been bought by PTOs? Or should that have been an obligation of a district, so it's like, kind of like, I feel like should there be some sort of a district obligation like? Listed or defined somewhere.
We did, we did speak to that as well, um, and we spoke about, you know, even, even the, the Z, um, curtain.
The curtain, that, I know, uh, I think, was it, was it Peaslee, the sign fell down, the Peaslee sign, you know, things like that.
I think that we talked about, you know, keeping our lines of communication open. And also, um, there are also certain, I believe. That we need to follow, um, for certain items.
Um, as well. Which was stated in here and, and it's, yeah, so it's like, I saw that, and then just like some of the things. Like a question, for example, and I know, I'm just thinking of it because it came up specifically at Melican when they had a sponsorship of. Um, Cold, Cold Harbor Brewery, is that right? Right, so Cold Harbor Brewery, but it's a restaurant too now, so it's kind of like. Would that fall under the advertisement of alcohol?
That was a PTO sponsored event.
If it's a PTO, you know what I mean, like, so if it's, but.
It wasn't a school sponsored.
Right.
No, 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 I'm not saying you were at an event, I'm saying if we.
No, I'm saying I was at an event.
I'm not judging, alright.
I was in a PTO, the. At Cold Harbor family and they advertised through different venues, I can't even remember where I see these.
Yeah, I'm talking more of like sponsorship, like if we get a T-shirt for to sponsor an event, that's a fundraiser. Can we put their logo up, they have a TV screen that they put logos up of their sponsors like.
I think it does speak, it does speak the, the mission and core values of the district needs to be in alignment with, so.
And if I remember the discussion correctly, it kind of in the end was, there is guidance, but also the buck stops the crank, like it was.
So that's the kind of thing that, so it's.
Yes, to Cold Harbor.
Well, it's just like little things like that, that it's just, it makes you think like, um.
I think my rec- and my recollection is, we, we had a lot of great conversation in policy subcommittee. We then wanted to get the policy out to some PTA folks, NEF.
Yeah.
Have people look at it through their lens to see.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask you too is. Can we, can we share this with, is that okay with you?
That'd be great.
I would love to share it with some of the PTOs and just have them kind of peruse it and like look, um, through it.
That'd be great.
Um, on the second page, donations and sponsorships. If you go to the eighth paragraph, it starts with approved support organizations. Some of those need to be changed.
Yeah, I have those too, that, that's, that's what I, that's what I was talking about, the, I wanted to find the, if it was a North Borough or South Borough collaborative. Because we don't have any of those, we don't have SEF or APTO.
Now, I don't know if it needs to be in here, because I'm sure we have. A policy on naming of buildings, because we don't do that as the regional school committee can. But any building here in North Borough is owned by the town, so I didn't know if. Sometimes we refer to another policy, okay, so either refer to a policy. Or when you go down to the ownership of donations, eh, just in case, I'm just thinking in the future, if you have somebody. Wants to give a large donation, say, well, I would like to.
Like Lincoln Street School, it's called Lincoln Street School, so I want to name Lincoln Street School to the Frank Building.
I want to rename, well, this has already been renamed, yeah, I want to rename the art room after somebody, okay? That isn't, just because somebody gives you five thousand or ten thousand dollars, doesn't mean there is a procedure to go through that. I think there's a different procedure you have to go through if it's a room within a building. But the buildings per se are town, even the fields would be town owned. So at that point, you would have to have the board of selectmen involved into it and the town administrator, so whether, it's up to you. I don't know the whether that has to be in there, I mean, sometimes we try to make policies short and sweet so that you can read them. I don't know if it's needed in there, that's just a suggestion, you can keep it or not.
Yeah, well, uh, Kristen and I will look up the building naming policy and see if there's a way to put a bullet point in here.
And even if you, sometimes what we do is even put another policy at the bottom of it, for reference, reference, please refer to.
Um, yeah, I mean, we've embedded, I mean, we've embedded policies into it, I think there's, it says in the paragraph here. You know, in reference to. The joint policy.
And see what it is about naming rooms. I think it's school committee, but I'm not sure.
I know there's a naming policy at the region, obviously.
There is a, there is a naming.
That's gone.
There is a policy in our policy, in ours, North Borough for naming buildings, we do have one for North Borough.
But see, I don't know about rooms, cause this was.
I don't know about rooms either, I don't know, did it say naming rooms in the paragraph here?
No, I didn't see that.
Oh, I was gonna say, I didn't, I don't remember reading about paragraph, but yeah.
But that might be in the naming.
No, but I, I honestly, I love where you guys are going with this.
That's good, good, good feedback, Kelly, thank you.
Okay, moving on.
Chipping away.
Chipping away, we're off, we're off.
You're up to what now, four pages, you may get up to six.
Alrighty, uh, distribution of personnel report.
So in your packet is the personnel report as of May first, so pretty light, we did have a custodian transfer from Proctor.
Yes, and I have to say, Corey is very good, he's very nice. He's always been so kind to all of the kids, um, I think, I think he goes by Corey with the kids. I don't think he goes by Mr. Farley, he goes by Corey with them, and he's always been great with the staff, the staff of. Every staff I've ever talked to is loving and appreciating him and stuff, and he's great, um, I worked with him for many years at Proctor. And, um, he's always so helpful and kind and everything and he's great, so. Um, I was kind of excited when I saw, I was like, oh, he's coming about, he did tell me that he applied ahead of time, he's like, he's like, I applied for it, cause he's been doing nights. Um, for a long, many, many years at Proctor, so he was excited to get a day shift potentially, so. When I saw that come through, I was like, oh, yay, Corey's coming to here, so, he's really great, but. And he also worked, I think it was at Peaslee the year before, I think he took a year and went to Peaslee or one of the other schools and, so, he's great. Um, is next month's where staff?
Yes, we will invite our retirees to, so we can honor and celebrate their tenure in our district. We will be having a. We will be having a charcuterie board.
Yes.
We have it organized, so we should be prepared for that.
Well, hopefully Hopefully we'll all be sitting.
It's early June.
I'll see, I'll see, hopefully Kelly and I will still be here.
Still be here.
This could be our last meeting.
Could be our last meeting. Yeah, one of us. Thanks Greg, thank you. Just don't know. Answer, one of us will be here. Alrighty. Communication, nothing, action on minutes?
One thing on the communication, so Cheryl did send out a doodle poll about
Oh, I did see that, moving the combined meeting. Did everybody respond to that? Yeah, okay, great. Is that a problem for anybody? You can't do it? Oh.
When I looked, everybody said like, everyone who had responded at the time, when I looked this afternoon, could.
Okay, okay, I looked, it was just Lauren and I who filled it out by
On my email, all day.
All day. Alright. Action on minutes?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move to accept the minutes of the open meeting of April third, twenty twenty-four. Uh accept the special open meeting minutes of April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. I don't know if I can, I was
Yep, you can.
I can?
Yep.
And the North Borough School Committee's Policy Development Subcommittee Open Meeting Minutes of April second, twenty twenty-four. And thank Lauren and Kristen for serving on it.
Thank, second.
Um motion by Joan, seconded by Bryce. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimously passes, thank you. Okay, so future agenda items, um we have election of officers. There's an election, as people know, on, in, in Melican, in this building, on May fourteenth, Tuesday, May fourteenth, I believe is the date.
Yes.
Right? Yeah. And um and then after that May meeting, then our first meeting after the May election is when we do reelection of officers um for the committee, um and welcome any potential new um members also. Um we are going to do also the election of the superintendency Union, retiree recognition, um subcommittee liaisons and assignments. Um I am gonna move that to September because um you can kind of just like do a food for thought type thing in June, but um I feel like that's
That'll be one of the options in the charcuterie board.
Yeah, yeah.
Will we need members though to sign up on the warrants?
Uh warrants would be, yeah, they'll be, um so I guess, yeah, it would be on this, I mean, because I think there's a few things that have to be.
Calendar committee, you'll be, will you be meeting in the summer?
Uh, no.
I don't know, I mean, if we don't get it worked on, we might be.
No, hopefully we'll be done, Joan. We're gonna be done, we're done, we're finishing this up. Finishing it up, it's gonna be done and over with, no, yeah, maybe, so we can, I guess we can then keep that on the June for I was thinking, cause it said twenty-four, twenty-five, so that's what I was thinking. But yeah, so I guess there are a few things that we could discuss. And then cable TV, um I don't, I mean, have we heard back from them? I think part of Dana's thing is that he is applying for ARPA funds. So, and I don't know if that has happened yet or not.
I can follow up with Dana and see where we are with the request.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I, I usually see him on Tuesdays at parent drop-off.
If we don't, if we don't make a decision about where we're having our meetings in June, will we have to have a special virtual meeting over the summer to decide whether we're moving our meetings in September?
We could potentially, June meeting, do a hypothet- we could do a discussion on if we even want to move and stuff like that. And then it'd kind of be like, discuss, do we wanna move, would it, what are the benefits, pros, cons? We could do that next month, and then decide as a committee if that's what we wanna do, then as soon as it's up and ready, we move from here to there type thing.
Do we know if the audio is much better there, like the
Acoustics, you mean?
Yeah.
Well
The audience can't hear us.
Yeah, so
On home and in virtual, you can hear everybody.
Yeah, so um
How's it over there?
Well, it's non-existent at the moment there, because it's, it's not set up, like the microphones and things like that. But the idea is that Dana, so maybe we do invite him next month and we discuss it, have a thing. The idea behind it is that they are gonna be hardwiring certain things around it. The cameras, things like that, so there wouldn't be like setups and maneuverability things. Um it's a cafeteria auditorium, cafitorium, so the, it's not like built like a soundproof room, like a library is type thing, so I think in general
I think it will be an improvement.
Yeah.
That the acoustics in that space are much better than the acoustics in this room.
What is that noise, right?
I think really it's
Fan?
Can we, can we get the camera set up and everything we need in order to have meetings integrity? There's a projector there, there's more space for audience members, so I think it's, I definitely think it's a, a better space. And it's just a matter of, you know, to meet when we can get it set up to have meetings and we could shift there.
Jane Helen was very excited about having us there, you know?
Was she?
She was so excited, she was so excited, she's like, I can't wait for the move. Move here now, just let me know. So, yeah, I think, you know, and there, there's logistics with it, um that come with it, so, I mean, I think if you guys are okay, maybe discussing that next month. Um Principal Carr bullying data, um I'm not sure if you guys are envisioning that to be September? Or do you want that next month too? I don't know if she can have it ready in general, but I know
So I'll attend, attend the last
The last meeting, so
I can have, I can ask Principal Carr to put together a one-page slide of, of what we're seeing.
Yeah, like five minutes?
Sure.
You know?
So I'm gonna do some of the data.
Yeah. Anything else?
Um, it, I would like, it would be great if we could have a presentation at some point, maybe not June, maybe September or further down on um the situation of like pre- pre-K, it's become a
Yeah.
Priority for some, the state and federal level, and like what, could it look like and what would it cost us, and what would we have to Obviously, it's a long term.
I'm, I'm wondering if some of that would be touched upon with the eligibility and the feasibility of the Peaslee thing, or would there be more?
I think it's a complicated topic, because it's not just schools take on preschool, it's vouchers and waivers, and it's public and private. I think it would be nice to have Jennifer Henry, who is our expert in preschool, come and, and present what, what we're seeing, you know, and what we anticipate in the next three to five years in preschool.
So
How would we get there, I guess, would be a question that I would wonder, is that one of the challenges?
And I think when we were doing the presentation, we did have a couple of questions about the preschool also, that you, we were saying, so maybe September.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yes.
And I think even in September, whatever time Greg would wanna do it, I think an update on this study and the committee that worked together on the sister schools.
Yes, so I think that we also have the MSBA eligibility phase, so that should just be a running agenda item each month.
Yeah, add that to the agenda.
Yeah. And if there isn't any report, just let it go.
Speak to, you know, great configuration and
The Greek configuration study, your cousin's done anything, right?
No, we
Because of Peaslee, because it didn't make sense.
Yeah, we, we hi- yeah, we paused once we got, um we started the MSBA process, so.
Yeah, cause you're gonna have to look at it that way, so
Where do we, where do you want it on the agenda? Does anyone have any specific?
For MSBA?
MSBA reports?
Um, and it'd be old business?
I never understand between old business and new business.
Part of the superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report? Okay. Approval of bills, we're doing it in a timely manner, online. Uh, audience sharing? Yes, you in the back, no, okay. Alrighty. Any other business? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Motioned by Kristen, seconded by Joan.
Thank you.
All in favor? Nine twelve, we adjourn, thank you.